The hour having arrived, and we have a quorum of 220 people so far. There's a few people still checking in. So I hereby declare this 2023 town meeting for the town of Hanson in order. If you could please rise and join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So as we typically start our town meetings, we remember the people who we've lost since we last met. So if we could please have a moment of silence for the following. Gail C. Gronlund, Edward D. Jutras, Michael E. Rajdag. And I know everybody who leaves us from the town tears a bit of a hole in the fabric of the town, but I just wanted to say that losing Michael was particularly hard and a particularly devastating loss, especially since it was just so needless and senseless. I appointed Mike to the Finance Committee. He became the Chair of that committee. He served the town very, very well, and it's really horrible that we lost him the way we did. So if we can have a moment of silence, please. Thank you. I'd also like to thank a couple of public servants who are going to be stepping down from their positions or already have. One is Jim Hickey, who has served us as a select member. And the other is Jerry Thompson, who served us for many years as our Fire Chief. I don't know if Jerry's here. And on a related note, I'd like to welcome our old friend, but brand new Fire Chief, I'd also like to thank the organization Green Hanson, which I'm a member of, for doing their annual spring cleanup. The town looks terrific. Thank you for everybody who's been part of it. One note, if you are a guest, please confine yourself to this section up here. And I see our old friend Mary Marini back as a guest. But if you could please stay up there. You know that's not true. We'll take you back any time, Mary. So tonight, the rules of the meeting will be guided by Town Meeting Time, which is the official prelimentary book for the Massachusetts Moderators Association. Mr. Weeks reminds me, if you have yours, pull it out and follow along, okay? And as we traditionally do, I make a motion at the beginning of the meeting to allow the moderator to determine the quantum of a vote. That way, some of the votes require a nine-tenths vote, sometimes a two-thirds vote. It simply allows me to make my best judgment as to whether or not we made that threshold. If anybody disputes that or thinks I got it wrong, which wouldn't be the first time, just make a motion for a vote, and we will proceed to a counted vote. It's been seconded by Mr. Hayes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
I love it.
The ayes have it. Thank you very much. And something else that I keep forgetting to do, and I keep getting rightly chided about, is a lot of people are here for the first time and don't really realize who all the people are up on stage. So I just wanted to introduce myself. I'm Sean Keery. I'm the moderator. I'm elected by the town every three years to run the town meeting. And to my left is the Finance Committee, and if we could just have people introduce themselves.
Hi, good evening, Mike Dugan.
Aaron Barr.
Pepper San Lucio.
Steve Amico.
And to my right are the Select Board. If you guys could introduce yourselves.
Laura Kennes, Dan Raines.
Joey, Ed Hill.
Jim Hickey.
Terrific. And behind me are a couple of the town officers. We'll almost certainly be hearing from Kate Federoff, our Town Council, and Lisa Green, our Town Administrator. So with that, I will now recess the annual town meeting and call into session the special town meeting for May 1st, 2023. Article one. I move the town vote to transfer $2,190.13 from free cash to pay unpaid bills from fiscal year 2022. Do we have a second? Explanation: These funds are needed to pay for bills received after the close of fiscal year 2022 as printed in the warrant. And I should note this requires a nine-tenths vote. Any questions or concerns?
This is not reported, right?
Yes. Thank you very much. Gosh, I forgot a couple of announcements. My goodness, thank you. Before I even go on to that, I just wanted to make sure everybody knew, on behalf of the Clerk's Office, the annual town election will be held on Saturday, May 20th, from 10:00 a.m. until 5:00 p.m. in the Hanson Middle School Gymnasium, so just next door. Early voting hours for May 20th, 2023 annual town election will be held at the Hanson Town Hall, 542 Liberty Street, for three days. Monday, May 15th, from 9:00 to 4:00. Tuesday, May 16th, from 9:00 to 7:00. And Wednesday, May 17th, from 9:00 to 4:00. And then in response to Mr. Campbell's point of information, to begin the night, we have $859,461 in free cash. And we have $1,637,674.21 in the stabilization fund. So those are the funds we are dealing with. So Article one having been moved and seconded, any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article one signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it by the required nine-tenths. Article two. I move the town vote to transfer $24,800 from free cash to fund the purchase of protective clothing. This has been proposed by the Fire Chief. Do I have a second? Explanation: These funds are being requested to cover the cost of purchasing all required protective clothing for firefighters and paramedics that have been hired to fill vacancies. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all the-- oh, yes.
Um, why is this not under regular files?
Could you just go to the microphone, please?
I don't know.
Do you want to go for that?
Hi there. Molly McLennan, Spontum Avenue. Of course, we want our fire department to have everything that they need to be safe on the job, but I'm just curious to understand why this expense is not covered in the fire department's budget.
Oh, Fire Chief.
Good evening, everybody. That is because we had two unanticipated vacancies this year. We had a lieutenant retire that we were not expecting to retire, and then the chief retiring. So that requires us to hire two firefighters, and this isn't just their firefighting turnout gear. This is their ballistic gear for active shooter. This is their brush fire and extrication gear, their blood-bleeding pathogen gear, some boots and some other things. So this is all stuff that we're required to provide for them. We do in the budget, in our regular annual budget, have a lineup for replacements, but not for full purchases of gear, and certainly not for two people.
Thank you so much for clarifying.
Thank you. And thank you so much for introducing yourself. If you come to the microphone tonight, please introduce yourself and where you live, even if you think I know you. So thank you very much. All those in favor of Article two signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article two is adopted. Article three. I move the town vote to transfer $30,000 from free cash to supplement appropriations previously voted at the May 2022 annual town meeting for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2022, for fire and ambulance salaries. Seconded, this is proposed by the Fire Chief. The explanation: These funds are being requested to supplement the fire department's original budget after expending funds for an unplanned retirement buyout. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article three signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article three is adopted. Article four. I move the town vote to transfer $15,000 from free cash to pay for improvements to private gravel roads in the town of Hanson. Seconded, this is proposed by the Highway Department. The explanation: The Highway Department grades all private gravel roads in the town of Hanson two times per year to maintain public safety and emergency access. These funds are required for this purpose, as well as to fill potholes with suitable material between grading cycles. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article four signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article four is adopted. Article five. I move the town vote to transfer $73,560 from free cash to fund the fire department overtime costs for fiscal year 23. This is proposed by the Fire Chief. Seconded, the explanation: These funds are being requested to cover the overtime costs of maintaining four firefighter slash paramedics on duty while our new hire attends recruit training at the Massachusetts Firefighting Academy. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article five signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article five is adopted. Article six, as you can see in the warrant, has several different expenditures. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to move the article, and then I'm going to call off each of the items, and then if anybody would like to discuss it, you can just say hold, and we'll come back to it. All right? Article six. I move the town vote to transfer the following sums of money from free cash and the American Rescue Plan Act funds to be reimbursed or expended for the following capital equipment and capital projects for various town departments as printed in the informational warrant.
Do we have water and electricity?
I'll just redo the whole thing. Article six. I move the town vote to transfer the following sums of money from free cash and funds from the American Rescue Plan Act and water-related earnings to be reimbursed or expended for the following capital equipment and capital projects for various town departments as printed in the informational warrant. Seconded, so we have line one, repairs for the Hanson Middle School elevator. If anybody wants to hold for discussion, yell out "hold." Line two, repairs for the Hanson Middle School septic system. Line three, to purchase a new hybrid Mark cruiser to replace an older gas-fueled cruiser. Line four, the funding is to replace the current town website carrier with a more efficient, user-friendly website carrier. Line five, the town's insurance carrier is requiring all of its clients to enforce two-factor authentication. God, I hate that stuff. Having a two-factor authentication will add an additional layer of protection to securing our network. Line six, software will enable the town to move from paper to an electronic format for efficient management of employee time off and attendance. Line seven, funding will be used for reviewing and updating the town policies and procedures in Employee Handbook. Line eight, the funding will be used to hire a financial consultant to conduct a municipal financial analysis of town finances and develop a financial plan that will provide guidance to the town in the future budgeting. Line nine, the Water Department needs to replace its current vehicle as the cost of maintenance is excessive. And line 10, the funding will be used to update the master plan. The balance remaining that the town is responsible for is $10,000. Did anybody want to discuss any of those lines? Which line would you like to discuss?
That would be line seven, updating policies, procedures, and the employee handbook. How is that money going to be expended? Is somebody going to come in and give us advice, or are you hiring a consultant, or is that going to be spent in-house?
We'll hear from the Town Administrator.
Yes, good evening. We will be hiring a consultant who will review all of the current policies for compliance with all the current laws and regulations. And what they will do is they will help us draft up new policies that are in compliance with both wording and the regulations for all of the policies, including labor and policies for the employee handbook.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or concerns? Yes, sir. If you could just introduce yourself, please.
Yes, Gary Johnston. I have a question on line three on this cruiser we want to add. What's wrong with the old cruiser? How old is it?
1,000,000 miles.
Yeah, that's ready for replacement?
Recognize the chief. If you could just repeat the information you gave before.
So it's replacing a 2017 cruiser that has 67,000 miles on it. That actually is a lot of miles because what you have to do is basically at least double that for a police cruiser because of the idle times that they have. So the wear and tear in the engine is up there. So since I got here, I started a program where we turn over two to three cars every year. So usually, the oldest cars we have are about six years old at most. We actually trade them in. We can actually get a couple of bucks back to offset the cost. So it's been working well for, going on, what, six, seven years now anyways? I will trade that in. I'll get the best price I can for it to offset the equipment and the new one. Because the other problem is, for change the body styles, so I can't reuse too much stuff anymore. I used to be able to reuse the cages and things. I can't reuse things anymore.
Any other questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article six signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article six is adopted. Article seven. I move the town vote to transfer $20,852 from the Community Preservation Committee's Open Space Recreation Fund and $194,148 from the Community Preservation Committee's Undesignated Reserve Fund to pay for the construction of a new soccer field and football field at the Hanson Middle School. Do we have a second? Seconded, proposed by the Community Preservation Committee. The explanation: These funds are requested by the Hanson Park and Fields Commission to create new playing fields for use by Hanson Middle School students, Hanson Youth Soccer and Football Programs, and the public. The field space at Hanson Middle School is currently in poor condition and needs major rehabilitation. Additional funding to be used for this project includes an earmark from the state of Massachusetts for $200,000, as well as contributions of $7,500 each from Whitman, Hanson Youth Soccer, and Hanson Youth Football, for a total of $15,000. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article seven signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article seven is adopted. And with that, I'll call an end and adjourn the special town meeting, and reconvene the What?
That's the football crowd.
Oh. You know, we've got a lot more stuff to do. Stay, stay. Why would you leave Sherwood Forest? I have a sword. Just in case the gavel isn't enough. Don't mess with me. All righty, so now we're moving on to the annual town meeting. Article one. I move the town vote to hear reports of the various town officers, committees, special committees, and act thereon. Do I have a second? Explanation: The reports voted on are those published in the 2022 Town Report, which are available out in the lobby. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article one signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article one is adopted. Article two. I move the town vote to authorize the treasurer-collector to enter into compensating balance agreements during fiscal year 2024 as permitted by Mass General Law's Chapter 44, Section 53F. Seconded, every year this article is voted, it simply allows the treasurer-collector to maintain accounts using credits instead of money to pay for banking charges. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article two signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article two is adopted. Article three. I move the town vote to fix the salary and compensation of all paid elected officials and committees as printed in the informational warrant. Seconded, explanation: This article sets the salaries for the elected officials. Now I remember when this article used to have a lot of different people in it, but now we're down to just the town clerk. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article three signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article three is adopted. We had an issue with Article four in that some of the information may have been incorrect. And so we have new information being handed out, I understand. How long will that take? It's just going to be passed around? So I'm going to take Article four, and I'm going to hold it for a couple of articles, and then we can-- Everybody has it now? Oh, okay. If everybody's comfortable having it. Okay. In that case, it's coming around. I'll give you guys a few minutes to take a look at it, and then we'll come back to Article four. So we'll move on to another article, which is Article five. It's always the highlight of my May town meeting. Okay, so what we're going to do, I've been informed by the Chair of the Finance Committee that we really need to do Article four before we go on to five. So if everybody could get a copy of what you're being handed out, we'll take a few minutes. I gave him one to share. All right, does everybody have a copy of the chart?
Yes.
No? Over here, please. All right, terrific. Yeah, take a look at that while I announce the article. Article four. I move the town vote-- I move the town vote to revoke the provision of Chapter 44, Section 53F and a half of the Massachusetts General Laws, ceasing the Hanson Transfer Station as an enterprise fund effective fiscal year 2024. Do I have a second? Seconded, here's the explanation: The transfer station is no longer self-sustaining as an enterprise fund. The cost to operate the transfer station has consistently and increasingly exceeded the revenue from stickers, bags, and trip tickets year over year. When the enterprise fund was instituted in 2014, China was accepting recycling at no cost to the municipality. Since 2017, when China ceased accepting recyclables, the cost to dispose of recyclables has been added to the cost to operate the transfer station. More recently, due to inflationary impact, disposal and hauling costs have increased, and fuel charges have been instituted. These increases are in addition to wage, indirect costs, and utility increases. Absence of substantial increases to user fees, the enterprise fund model is not able to sustain the operation of the transfer station. As such, the transfer station revenue will now be directed to the general fund. Any questions or concerns?
There's a similar, but not exact article back in 2020, which I get up and spoke, which was defeated by the town meeting that year. I just want to explain to you and just go back and read through the history, going back to 2014. I went to all of the selectments meetings then in which the pay-as-you-throw system was discussed. The lady from the DEP that came down told us how it was going to work, that the particular enterprise fund that we set up under that half in the general law basically states that you can use partially free cash or taxation if you don't have enough money from the enterprise to fund it. That's the way, that's why we basically adopted that free cash, that particular section of the law regarding the enterprise fund. And the Recreation Commission has set up the same way, and that was done in the same year. The premise of the article, the first sentence of the article, really isn't correct. It says, "We are no lo-- it's no longer self-sustaining as an enterprise account." It has never been entirely self-sustaining as an enterprise account, as we were told back when it was set up in 2014. In fact, for every year since fiscal 2015, which was the first year under the pay-as-you-throw system, we have used a degree of taxation or free cash to fund it, with the exception of 2023. Okay? If you jump ahead to Article six, take a look at Article six. We generated over $400,000 in the enterprise account that year, and our costs, you'll see the cost of $404,000, and you'll see the revenue of $404,000 coming from retained earnings and from the enterprise account. Why? Because the fees jumped up in cost, and we paid those fees. You'll see the off-year, which is going to be fiscal year 2000, and fiscal year 2024, basically because we were in the off-year and because all of that money for the two-year transfer permits went for 2000, 2023. So the graph is really wrong. The graph only goes up to 2022. It doesn't show you the $400,000 that's being generated. And take a look at the cost between 2024 and 2024 and next fiscal year, which are basically going down by about $100,000. So-- So those aren't included in the graph. I just wanted to remind everybody that if you do away with the, with the enterprise account, and everything flows into the general fund, guess what happens? It becomes free cash and can get used by any department in the town. Does it make any sense to have complaints about taxation, spending money on taxation, and then do away with an enterprise account that's taking care of a substantial amount of the transfer station? Do away with that, have it come into free cash, and now you're funding everything by taxation, because you know free cash can be used by any department in the town. So I ask you to please defeat this article, and if you, if you want to, if you want to maintain the transfer station and, and try to do it with more funding, you just increase your fees as your costs go up. A lot of it's due to fuel, but so is in everything in the town that runs on fuel. The buildings and everything else that require energy, that's going up at the same time. So why pick on the transfer station? It's a very efficiently run, a very efficiently run department with only two full-time employees. Please defeat the article.
Mr. Dugan?
So just wanted to speak on a couple of those points. The reason that we are looking to move this forward is we're trying to create some more transparency, and we're also trying to create a more simpler way of doing things. Couple of other issues at hand. In regards to the, the chart and expenses, that's absolutely correct. And expenses continue to rise. In February, just for point of reference, when we started the program, it was zero for recycling. We are now paying $120 a ton to remove recycling. And I believe solid waste is now $144 for each ton, with fuel surcharges, pickup fees, and additional extra fees. Rationale for the article is not only to have this be a town department, fully funded, have availability of cash. Two points on that. One is that if it stays as an enterprise fund, the retained earnings that Mr. Young talked about have to then be certified. So anything that is earned and stays, you cannot use in the same year. If you have a cash flow crunch for some reason, there are two methods of then being able to access cash. One is to come back here at town meeting and ask for supplementation, or to have a request to the Finance Committee for a reserve fund. Moving to a town department allows the transfer station to use a line item transfer and help alleviate any short-term cash flow needs. So those are really the two primary reasons for moving this forward.
Mr. Weeks?
I just wanted to add, just because Article Six was brought up, under FY23, it says total, total budgeted revenues, $227,027 is not 400 and 4,700, that's the expenses. So the revenue is about half of what the expense actually is, just for record.
Yeah.
Melissa Panetti, 19, Proud Footway, Chair of the Board of Health. I thought it would be helpful to come up here and share a bit with all of you that was shared in front of the Select Board, I think last month or the month before at some point. A lot of time has been put into the transfer station over the last year. I've learned more about trash than I, I think I ever cared to know. But we, the Board of Health has spent significant time looking at the growing revenue and expense gap in the transfer station budget. We've looked at the contracts for disposal and hauling that had expired some time ago. We met with Waste Management, who's a competitor to who we currently use, to talk about quotes from them for servicing the transfer station, and also for a broad-stroke townwide pickup number. We spoke with Harvey, who currently services the transfer station, to see what they could offer us in terms of renewing our contract. We looked at the budget extensively. I certainly was a ground-up learning, learning how a transfer station even operates. You know, my, my sense is that the budget is pretty tight and quite simple, with the overwhelming cost of operation coming from hauling and disposal. We spent a lot of time thinking about ways to decrease the overall cost of disposal and hauling by decreasing the tonnage of mainstream waste, and that's included opening up the swap shop. I actually think it's been, it might be successful in reducing our tonnage recently, or participating in reducing it. We've been meeting with Sosha Recycling to learn how to, to save, save costs through recycling programs and use RDP grant monies to improve our, our service of the transfer station. I spent time going back looking at the 2014 article that established the enterprise fund, because I wasn't around then, and looking at the overall trend of expenses to revenues from then until now. I think the eye-opener for me was when, I believe just last month, we signed a contract for another year with Harvey for the, the next year of disposal and hauling. And the expense numbers for 2003 represent, from, that represented on the chart are represented from Harvey, who we are now, who we are continuing to use. Those numbers in comparison to 2016, just after the enterprise fund was established, plus all of the, the items in the explanation, really demonstrate the magnitude of difference in the cost to operate the transfer station between then and now. I, you know, to be clear, we, the Board of Health understands the enterprise fund, fund model to either have the, the transfer station be self-sustaining or substantially self-sustaining, given the, the information we've provided in the charts and what we've come to know over the last, or I've come to know over the last year, is that I can't see a path to either. But I, I want to emphasize, this article is in no way intended to change the structure or function or operation of the transfer station. It is simply a matter of accounting, as Mr. Dugan shared with all of you.
Any other questions or concerns, Mr. Young?
She used the key word substantially, substantially funded. That's the way it was presented to us in 2014. Not fully funded, but substantially funded. That's why we picked that particular section of the law. And also, I want to correct Mr. Weeks, if you go to Article Six. The total costs in 2023 as projected were in fact 404,752, salaries 125,752, expenses 229,000, indirect costs 50,000, for a total of 404,752. Total projected cost, and you have, there's an error for 2024 in Article Six. It's 116,115, salaries going down, expenses 200,000, 200,000, that should be down on the next line, and next to expenses, expenses going down 29,000, direct cost 12,000, indirect cost going down about $38,000, for a total of 328,45. The way, the way you, you really keep your costs in order for a department, a small department like this, is to make sure you go out to bid or get other prices, every, every three or four years, just to keep that particular hauler and person you're paying for the tipping honest. That wasn't being done. It's one thing these people haven't told you, that wasn't being done. It is now, okay? And that's how you do it, to keep those costs down. So I suggest you do that, defeat this article, because if you don't, all that enterprise money is just going to flow right into free cash, where it can be used by, by any department that wants it. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Michael Day, Beckett Street. It, it seems to me that waste removal would be a core function of any town, and so I had a question I hope, I was hoping that a town representative might be able to address, which is, I was just curious, the, the article states, absence of substantial increases to user fees, the enterprise model is not able to sustain the operation of the transfer station. So I was just curious if there's any projection or estimate about how, how much user fees would need to increase to fill that gap?
Mr. Dugan?
To answer your question, a task force was created and is reviewing all opportunities, whether it's maintain the transfer station as is, look at other, combining with other towns, or going to a curbside model. That's being evaluated. Nothing's been done. We want to stress again, this particular article in terms of how the transfer station would operate, nothing is going to change for the current fiscal year and the next fiscal year. And quite frankly, anything that would be put in place would take 18 to 24 months before it could be even implemented, given the need for potential equipment and upgrades of that nature, if we did something else. So, you know, the transfer station is here to stay for the next few years. Task force is evaluating other opportunities, and again, we may come right back to where we are. At that point, would we be looking at user fees to help mitigate these expenses? While I do have the microphone, if I may, Mr. Moderator, two other points, as Mr. Young goes back to a future article in Article Six, and giving the implication of, or what I am hearing was the implication that revenue, that expenses are being managed down. What I need to inform everybody of is, this was a very, very tough budget cycle. Every department got some form of a haircut. This was not, this as presented is not the full budget that was requested. What we are looking to do at this stage with that particular article is, given how tight cash, free cash was, to be able to supplement this article to its normal amount from the October special meeting. So in all fairness, the full budget as requested would have been 428,415. And like a lot of other budgets, department budgets, we needed to cut, and I may be off on the number slightly, it was right around 700,000, out of all different budgets, to get us to a balanced budget to present to you. So this is not the only account that's taking, looking to take a haircut. You know, police, the same way. I can go through seven or eight other departments that have some sort of budget decline. And the last point I would make is, we rely heavily on the ambulance fund to help balance the, our overall operating budget, and it's not just for fire equipment. It does help supplement their capital needs, but it also helps supplement the rest of the budget. This would be the same way.
Ms. Frank Malisi, Brook Street. Just want to make a couple of quick points. You know, as long as I can remember coming to town meeting, we've always had this, this transfer station budget discussion, it's always been in a deficit, with the exception of special town meeting in October of last year, when they had those retained earnings from the fees. I just want to stress what, what the Chair of the Board of Health said, that there's going to be no functional change to the transfer station, this is just merely putting it into the general budget. The town at any point in time can decide not to put taxation into an enterprise fund or free cash into an enterprise fund to limit it any year. It doesn't necessarily mean that it needs to be in a general budget, or just because it's an enterprise fund needs to be, it says it needs to be fully funded. Enterprise fund is similar to the recreation fund, where if we have our retained, our retained earnings that we do from weddings and so on, it just can't be touched by the outside operating budget. So I just want to stress that. Also, on a, on a third point, I do private pickup at my house, and I don't know if anybody else here does, but there's been a very strict contraction of the number of vendors that actually will pick up your trash. Right now, I believe it's up to three, when before we used to have Thompson Waste Removal, that will come and do curbside pickup, a whole bunch of different places. Now it's just one big company that's out there. Getting somebody to give you a reasonable price on nearly anything now is, is a really hard predicament to be in, and I can't imagine how it would be when you have two or three trash vendors in the whole state of Massachusetts that are essentially a monopoly, and trying to bid around, it doesn't really work that much. But, you know, we've been having this discussion every year. I think this is the right direction to go. I think that it's smart, and I think it just kind of simplifies the process and makes it easier to fund the transfer station, not harder to fund the transfer station.
Yes, ma'am.
Melissa Panetti, 19, Proud Foot. I just wanted to address the, the question of sticker fees. It's come up a couple of times, injected to me personally, and I think, I think that the concern the Board of Health has discussed in just monilaterally increasing the sticker fees is that the last increase, which is probably significantly lower than what we would be looking at if we were going to self-sustain it right now, would be a lot more. And that was, the $50 a year, or 100 every two-year increase was not very well received by many folks in town. So part of the, the committee or task force to look at the transfer station is in effort to be transparent and allow the citizens to, to participate and, and share in discussion about what, what would be reasonable fees, et cetera.
All right. So, good discussion. Time to move the article? I think so. So all those in favor of Article Four signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay?
Nay.
In the Chair's opinion, the ayes have it, Article Four is adopted. Article Five. I move the town vote to determine what sums of money the town will raise and appropriate by taxation, transfer from free cash, transfer from town ambulance funds, water department revenue, water surplus, Title V Special Revenue Fund, NWPAT loan and payment receipts, reserved for appropriation, Conservation Notice of Intent Fund, overlay surplus of the fund balance reserved for reduction of future excluded debt, to defer charges and expenses of the town, including debt and interest, and to provide for a reserve fund for the 2024 fiscal year as printed in the informational warrant. Do I have a second?
Second.
So, this article refers to the fiscal '24 annual budget lines, and so it's this chart in your informational warrant, it's the, the, let's see, how many lines are we up to now? 93 lines within the budget. And I just want to point out that this, this is a document that the Finance Committee starts thinking about well before Christmas, and spends many months putting together in collaboration with the town manager, the town administrator, and the Select Board. And so what we will be doing is voting on the Finance Committee Recommends column. That's the number, sometimes the, the various columns differ. You can see what the department request was, you can see what the Select Board recommended, you can see what the Finance Committee recommends. We are voting on the Finance Committee Recommends column. So what I'll do is I'm going to go down the line, the various lines, I'm going to pause after each one. If you would like to debate that particular line, yell out "Hold." Yell it louder than you think you need to, so I can hear it. And then we'll come back to it. Otherwise, we're going to just, I'm going to say "Accepted," and we'll just not debate it. So, here we go. Line one. Line one is held. Line two. Oh, pardon me, yes.
Just before we start getting into the individual budget items, because I think once we've voted on it, you know, it's harder to go back. I was just hoping that the Finance Committee might be able to answer a question about their overall recommendations versus the requested budget. Excuse me. So when you sum the difference between the overall, like total all budgets, between what is requested and what is being recommended, it amounts to 619,000 some odd dollars, but 619 some odd thousand dollars. So we're talking less than a million out of a $34 million budget. 45% of that cut is coming from education. And I'm just trying to understand, you know, with every department taking a haircut and trying to share this burden equally, you know, why is 45% of it coming from education as the recommendation? And how does that affect our standing in the regional school district? If we don't meet the requested funding?
Mr. Young, could you go to the microphone if you want to make a comment?
There is no difference between the department head request and the amount recommended by either the Board of Selectmen, Town Administrator, or the, or the Finance Committee. That's, that's a misprint. You're looking at in, in that, what you're seeing, okay? Under Woodman-Hanson Regional High School, is that what you mean? The 14-101 versus the 13-907, is that what you're talking about?
No, looking at the education.
Yeah, right here.
Mostly John, looking at White Jesus.
No, is this number here? 14-101? That should be the standard, 13-907-233. Yeah. You know what, Mr. Hayes brings up a good, you go to line number 57, you'll see it.
This document, the Article Five.
Yeah. I mean, it, if you see line number 57, okay, what she's referring to is the 14-101-618.
What's it doing?
That should be 13-907-233. The department head request is exactly the same as the 13-907, because they, they redid the assessment to the town, the 13,000, 13,009,07.
Yeah, I think I could add a little bit of light to this, too. I mean, every year, the, the request from Whitman Hansen is, it's a, it's a moving target in some ways, because the school committee is finalizing figures with the various towns.
That's the certified assessment.
Yes, so.
Okay.
Thank you. I think the confusion is, I was referring to the yellow document, for anyone else who's making a similar mistake, when I should have been referring to the separate green Article Five document.
Okay.
So, just for anyone who's still in the yellow book.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And actually, and Mr. Hayes brought up a great point, typically what we'll do is we'll debate the school funding level when we get to the school funding level. So, what I'd like to do is just go through all the lines and see what needs to be held, and then we'll go back and we'll talk about them. Ms. Marini?
At this point, could we have the free cash, if we spent some at the special town meeting? Can we have the amount this last, please?
Request is for what free cash is left now?
692,000.
Stand here.
Flat?
Yep.
I'm told that the amount of free cash left in the kitty is $692,000 even.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So, we'll start again here. Line one. Hold. Line one is held. Line two. Accepted. Line three, oh, I'm sorry. There's no line three. Line four. Accepted. Line five. Accepted. Line six. Accepted. Line seven. Accepted. Line eight. Accepted. Line nine. Accepted. Line 10. Accepted. Line 11. Accepted. Line 12. Accepted. Line 13. Accepted. Line 14. Accepted. Line 15. Accepted. Line 16. Accepted. Line 17. Line 17 is held. Line 18. Accepted. Line 19. Accepted. Line 20. Accepted. Line 21. Accepted. Line 22. Accepted. Line 23. Accepted. Line 24. Line 24 is held. Line 25. Accepted. Line 26. Accepted. Line 27. Accepted. Line 28. Accepted. Line 29. Accepted. Line 30. Accepted. Line 31. Accepted. Line 32. Accepted. Line 33. Accepted. Line 34. Accepted. Line 35. Accepted. Line 36. Accepted. Line 37. Accepted. Line 38. Accepted. Line 39. Accepted. Line 40. Accepted. Line 41. Accepted. Line 42. Accepted. Line 43. Accepted. Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, line 43 held. Line 44. Accepted. Line 45. Accepted. Line 46. Accepted. Line 47. Accepted. Line 48. Line 49. Accepted. Line 50. Accepted. Line 51. Accepted. Line 52. Accepted. Line 53. Accepted. Line 54. Accepted. Line 55. Accepted. Line 56. Accepted. Line 57. Accepted. Line 58. Accepted. Line 59. Accepted. Line 60. Accepted. Line 61. Accepted. Oh, yes. Hold. Line 61 is held. Line 62. Accepted. Line 63. Accepted. Line 64. Accepted. Line 65. Accepted. Line 66. Accepted. Line 67. Accepted. Line 68. Accepted. Line 69. Accepted. Line 70. Accepted. Line 71. Accepted. Line 72. Accepted. Line 73. Accepted. Line 74. Accepted. Line 75. Accepted. Line 76. Accepted. Line 77. Accepted. Line 78. Accepted. Line 80. Accepted. Line 81. Accepted. Line 82. Accepted. Line 83. Accepted. Line 84. Accepted. Line 85. Accepted. Line 86. Accepted. Line 87. Accepted. Line 88. Line 89. Accepted. Line 90. Accepted. Line 91. Accepted. Line 92. Accepted. Line 93. All right. So, we'll go back in order, and we'll start with the first hold, which was line one. Any comments or questions about line one?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Steve McKinnon from Stevens Street. I guess I was the only one that held any of the lines, so the same question that I'm going to ask relative to this line is appropriate for all the lines. Having participated in the Finance Committee for a number of years, this budget scares And why? Because, two reasons, really. Two years ago, we approved an override, I think close to $1.9 million. We're still upside down. You never want to fund operating expenses with free cash. As a matter of fact, not that I look at this stuff often, but according to the state of Massachusetts, free cash, for those of you that don't know, free cash is basically, you project out what your revenue is. If you get more revenue than you projected, that's a plus. If you save some money on your expenses, there's another plus, there's a couple adjustments, but basically, that's free cash. And that's not a bad thing to have at the end of a budget cycle. But, what the state says and what common sense says, don't use one-time funds to pay for operating expenses. Unless I've miscalculated, and God knows I could have, there's $400,000 of free cash funding our operating budget. So, what does that mean? That means, next year, when the schools increase, I'm not going to pick on the schools necessarily, but let's say they increase their assessment 3.5%, $400,000 bucks, where's that going to come from? Why did I hold these lines? Because unfortunately, we live in a town where probably 80%, maybe a higher, is associated with salaries. I don't think I heard anything about, I haven't asked the question yet, but in times like this, I think it's, I don't necessarily think it's the prudent thing to go do, is take the money out of free cash. Unless you squeezed everything you can out of your, out of your operating budget. Look at salary lines. All I did was I took what was budgeted last year and compared it to what's budgeted this year. I didn't hold every line where there was an increase. I held some, because I want an explanation. I can tell you a few years ago, when it hit the fan back in the, you know, whenever, we had to look at individual departments. We had to make some tough decisions. But I don't remember tapping into free cash to fund operating expenses. The state tells us, free cash should be restricted to paying one-time expenditures from capital projects or replenishing other reserves, not paying operating expenses. So, Mr. Moderator, having said, said that, thank you. My question is the same for all the articles that I held, whether it's salaries, or I think I might have held the IT line. The increases, to me, were not kind of significant. I didn't hold all the lines that, where there was a significant increase. I would just like an explanation, hopefully the town would, as to why, if I, if my numbers are correct, departments within the town hall, salaries seem to have gone up 30%. I might be off, but it's damn close to that. Could be staffing increases, I just don't know. So, I'd like an explanation on those lines that I held.
Mr. Duke?
Mr. McKinnon, just looking at the very first one, and that's the, the one that I have a quick answer for you on. Part of that increase in budget was staffing, that a, a part-time assistant was added, and that's being split between the Select Board's office and the Planning Board. So, that would account for that increase.
Mr. McKinnon?
And on conservation, on conservation, that increase in salary was the conservation agent that was approved at the October town meeting to go from a part-time to full-time.
I guess my only question, my only point is, guys, this shouldn't come as a surprise to anybody, that it should have been broadly apparent two years ago when we had a override to fund operations. Maybe I spent too much time in the private sector, but you don't increase staff when you don't have the money. We don't have the money.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Young? Could you repeat the question into the microphone, please?
Is that part-time position a, a new position, or has that already been approved?
No, it was also approved at the October meeting last year.
Okay, because I noticed that there's another part, there's another part-time position in the, in wage and personnel for the Selectmen's Office that's, that's coming up when we get to the wage and personnel bylaw. Just want to note, that was a, that's a separate one?
The Town Administrator.
So, the part-time position that was to be in the Town Administrator's office, it was approved at October, October town meeting, that was actually a position that has been existence for a very long time under the union contract. It was approved, funding for that position was actually approved in October. There is discussions to create a part-time position in the wage and personnel, which is a non-union position, but at this point, it is not filled. So, that's what the difference is. So, it's, it's actually the same position, it's just going into the wage and personnel rather than the union position, the contracts.
So, that's, 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 that's correct. It, it was actually in, in part of the clerical professional union's contract, so it's coming out of that contract and going into the wage and personnel.
Could you go to the microphone, please?
How can you, how can you approve the budget now if that position in, in fiscal 2025 is going to be a wage and personnel position that hasn't been approved yet? Don't you have to, isn't this totally backwards? If it's coming out of a union and changing to a wage and personnel that, that has never been created, then you have to approve the wage and personnel bylaw change first, add that position, and then, and then fund the budget.
We'll have Ms. Federoff, our Town Council.
So, the budget is just to approve the appropriation of salaries, right? And it could be comprised of the Town Administrator's salary, the assistant, all of that. So, we're just approving the salaries. Where that position lives, namely whether it be a union position, which wouldn't involve town meeting, or whether it be a bylaw position, which would involve town meeting, is just where that position lives. If, for example, it remains a union position, because we're in the process of negotiating that right now, if it remains a union position, you still need the funding for that position. So, regardless, you need the appropriation for that position. It presumably, or I expect, the town meeting will approve to make this a new position in the wage and personnel because it's confidential, because that department deals with confidential information, labor-sensitive information, which generally is not a union position. So, that's why we're negotiating right now to remove that position from the union. But this is just approving the funding, so the timing of it has legally no significance, whether one comes first or one comes after.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of accepting line one signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those oppose nay?
Nay.
The ayes have it. Article, uh, line one is accepted. The next held line is line 17. Any further questions or comments?
Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of line 17 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, line 17 is accepted. The next held line is line 24. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of line 24 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, line 24 is accepted. Next held line is line 43. Any questions or comments? All those in favor of accepting line 43 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, line 43 is accepted. The next held line is line 61. Any questions or comments?
Hi, guys. Can you realize that we have frequent flyer tonight? So when I had previously come up here to inquire about the difference between the Department Request and the Finance Committee Recommendation, somebody else came up and corrected me that there was not a discrepancy. But there is, not between the Select Board Town Administrator Recommendations, but between the Department Request and the Finance Committee Recommendation. There has been $277,185 cut from the school budget in lines 57 and 61 between the Operating Assessment and the Norfolk Bristol Agricultural Program. So we just don't understand, you know, why are we cutting this?
Mr. Duke?
In a simple version, free cash or not, we just ran out of money. There were a lot of tough decisions in this budget, and we can't spend what we don't have, and yes.
We are spending what we don't have.
No, we're spending our savings account, is ultimately what it comes down to. But it was in lieu of that, or be sitting at this meeting and letting people know that they were going to lose a job. And quite frankly, just speaking for myself, not for the rest of the committee, I wasn't willing to do that. But Mr. McKinnon's comments in regards to operating and where our expenses are exceeding our revenues is 100% accurate. And we are going to need to take a hard look at this when we are, next year's budget cycle literally will start next week. And that'll be on the topic. But to quickly answer your question on line 61, in relation to the decrease in that, part of that has to do with, one student had kind of, was applied twice to Bristol and Norfolk, and had also been applied as a special needs, which that student by itself is $44,000. So, part of that reduction was basically correcting a, for lack of a better term, double booking.
And then there's still the matter of the discrepancy in the Whitman-Hanson Operating Assessment. So we have a decrease of, you know, $194,000-plus dollars. How does that impact our standing with the Regional School District if we fail to meet the needs of the Operating Assessment?
Mr. Duke?
Well, I think, you know, we went to the School Committee, and it was negotiated to say, here's what we can pay. It wasn't that we're looking to harm the schools more, to spend money in other departments, as I mentioned earlier. There are a lot of departments that got haircuts in this budget. And this is really what it came down to, is to, here's what was left of our funding sources and what we could pay.
If you could go to the microphone, Mr. Young. Mr. Malisi?
Yeah, so I believe it was about two weeks ago, they had a joint meeting with the Hanson, the Whitman Board of Selectmen with the School Committee, and they all collectively voted to actually lower the assessment for the school budget, down to Hanson's 4.99%, which you see there, which is not actually a discrepancy, because all three committees voted to lower the assessment down to that amount. And then Whitman had another, I think it was like four and a half, or four and three-quarters, or something like that. So it's not actually a discrepancy, they just voted after the fact to lower it down.
Mr. Young?
Yeah, that's what I said the first time. The actual certified assessment for the Whitman-Hanson Regional School District was $139,723. So the Finance Committee technically did not recommend less money, they recommended the same amount as the certified assessment. But the reason we always have a problem with that line now is because of what we did two or three years ago, and we're totally statutory, because right now, that line would be $1.6 million less than it is now, if we were under the percentage of people's method, and Whitman would be paying $1.6 million more than they're paying right now.
Well, I appreciate the information, but, you know, that, I remember all too well the Town Meeting where we debated that. I don't think that's on the agenda tonight. Any other questions or concerns on line 61? Seeing none, all those in favor of line 61 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, line 61 is accepted. And those are all the holds that I had. So, now that all the lines have been accepted, Article 5 has been moved, it has been seconded. I believe we've had a good debate on it. So, all those in favor of Article 5 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, Article 5 is adopted. Article 6, I move to pass over Article 6. Do I have a second? Article 6 is being passed over because of Article 4's results. So, all those in favor of passing over Article 6 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, Article 6 is passed over. Article 7, I move the Town vote to transfer $35,000 from IT expenses to IT salaries to hire a part-time IT assistant for 19 hours per week. Do I have a second? Seconded. The funds will help secure a part-time information technology assistant for the Technology Department to assist with the daily IT operations of the town. Any questions or concerns about Article 7? Kind of along the same lines, there's many other questions, but what's this person going to do? What is not getting done as a result of not having this person on staff? So, would you like to take it, you know, the Town Administrator?
So in this position, we currently have one IT director who is responsible for all IT through all of the town departments. He's responsible for all the computer networks, the phones, all email, all software, all hardware, all programs. He is in charge, he's in charge of all cybersecurity, and he works with all departments, including police, fire, library, senior center, Town Hall. He works at the Highway Department for the Water Department. One person is having a very difficult time handling all the demands on his time. If someone's computer is down, or their email is not working, he has that. Somebody may need their, the copier machine needs more toner, the phone system's not working very well. He's had a server that's crashed, something's gone wrong with the police, something's gone wrong with fire. One person cannot handle all of these demands for IT. So the part-time assistant, prior to that, what we were doing is we had a service called Unified that we had a contract with. Now, Unified would come in, if we had any trouble, we'd call them, they'd call us back, and they'd help us work through. And what we were paying for, per month, for this Unified contract service was $2,731 per month, which cost the town $32,772 a year. Right now, the IT director, if he is out on a personal matter, if he is sick, if he goes on vacation, he really doesn't have a vacation. He still receives phone calls regarding IT that's not working. When he's off, there's nobody to handle the IT. This person here will be a backup. He will help them. While our IT director is tending to more important items, like our phone system, our servers that might have crashed, our cloud, our email system. This other physician can be handling smaller items, like a computer that has gone down, and will now come up a computer screen that's not working, a keyboard that's all of a sudden not working, someone's email that's not receiving or sending emails. So this person will be helping the IT director with these smaller demands and attentions, while he is able to focus on the larger projects that we've done. So this particular salary of $35,000 will allow us to bring on someone at 19 hours a week, whereas when we had the contract position, it was only a difference of $2,225. And those people, we would have to call them and wait for a call back, for them to help the person who's having the issues, meaning that employee would not be able to work until we received a call back from the contractor to help them through it. Then they would have to get into the computer and work through it, and sometimes it wasn't immediate. We had to wait hours. So we had a town employee who was not able to do their job because their IT was not working. This position will help our IT director keep the town up and running more efficiently.
So I guess I was a little confused, because I thought I read somewhere that it was going to work in the IT department. I think what you just said, the IT department is one.
Is one person, correct.
Okay, thank you. Yes, ma'am, if you would like to come to the microphone.
Hi, Jane Downey, 500 Spring Street. Could the Finance Committee address why they're not recommending it, please?
Mr. Duke?
Sure. The reason that our committee had a recommendation, or voted not to recommend the article, isn't necessarily the need, as much as the optics of, we are in a very tight budget situation. Adding staff didn't seem to be the prudent thing to do. Now, on the offset of that, the way that this is written, is that this is basically transferring from one line in the existing budget to fund this position. So it's not an increase to the existing budget. We're not spending additional money on that. However, as we've seen in years gone by, that part-time positions become full-time positions, and along with benefits, and at this point in time, we did not recommend adding staff at this point in time. We would fully support, although it seems like that's already been the situation, that using the available funds for an outside contractor, but we did not recommend supporting, adding additional staff at this point.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Catherine Coakley, Hoppe Circle, Hanson. Ms. Marita, I had a similar question. So I'm asking you, as we go forward, when the Finance Committee does not recommend, could we hear on each article they didn't recommend as to the reason why?
Absolutely.
So you don't have to get up and ask?
Absolutely. Yes, sir.
Hi, Eric from Home Street. With regards to the position going forward, what about a, like a Northeastern co-op, or something like that, where you could still fill the need of the backup help, but maybe not spend as much money? Just an idea going forward.
Did you want to address that, Lisa? Ms. Green?
So we have certainly looked into bringing in interns from our local colleges. And some of the problems that we've been facing is, the interns, they're very demanding on what hours they can and cannot work, they need to work around their courses. And it's still open, we're still trying to find somebody, but it's not as easy as people think. We try and bring someone on, and then it doesn't work out because their class schedule changes. We find they're not really that responsive, because again, they're working on their courses, they're working on their homework, they're working on their finals. So we find that even though they want to learn through this internship, their mind is not really on the IT, because they're focusing more on their classes. If we bring someone in, again, we have a person that's dedicated to the town, they learn all the systems, that way they will be able to continue to work on the systems. When we bring in an intern, it's a short period of time, so they get up to speed, and then they leave, and then we've got to bring someone in, and then bring that person up to speed. When you're dealing with all the different IT, different software, hardware, programs that we work on, it's much more efficient to bring somebody in, get them used to everything that we have going on as far as all of our systems, and then keeping that person on, rather than training a new person every three or four months, when this one intern gets ready to either move on, graduate, or their core schedule doesn't allow them to come back to the town and work with us. So it's a great idea, and we do definitely support it, but with IT, it's very difficult to get somebody in and keep them, and get them up to speed, everything, because then they walk out the door and you're right back to square one.
Thanks. Yeah, one other thing I wanted to add that Ms. Green had not mentioned is, we're also in the process of updating, or I should say, going to a new platform for our website, which is woefully needed. And although the one that we had was good at the time that we implemented it, we've got a lot more needs now. One of the needs is, and this has come up in our strategic planning sessions, and in feedback that all of us have gotten at various points from residents, which is, we need to do a better job of communicating with people. And one of the things that the new website will allow us to do is, once things are posted on the website, they'll automatically feed out to Facebook, you know, Twitter, Instagram, and probably social media that I'm not even aware of. So we'll be trying to meet people where they are, and try to get that information out there to people. And that's a project that, you know, that's currently underway, but is going to require somebody who's going to be keeping a steady oar and making sure that folks are updating, because the website's only as good as people keeping it updated and keeping that information relevant. So that would be another thing that would be having this person do.
Mr. Malisi?
Yeah, two things, sorry. First thing is, an intern from Northeastern's not going to work as an intern or a co-op here at Hanson, that's not going to happen, they can make twice as much in the city. Second thing is, move the vote, please.
Well taken, but we'll give Mr. Young the final word here.
Mr. Marita, Article 11, item number EE, which is the Wage and Personnel Changes, has a position in the way that we're supposed to approve for Information Technology Assistant, Select Board Part-Time Administrator, Information Technology Assistant, $28 to $35. I'm assuming this is the same position that we're funding right now, correct?
I'm told, yes.
You can't do that. You have to vote the position first before you fund it. You know that as well as I do. You have to vote the position first before you fund it. That is the way we have done things since year one. You know that as well as I do.
I know that the order in which we've done Town Meeting has been fairly consistent.
Well, it's been totally consistent.
Mr. Young, that Wage and Personnel article always comes after Article 5, where we traditionally appropriate the money. I'm told by Town Council that Article 7 is just moving money from one place to another in anticipation of that vote.
I'm not following that, one iota. You have to create the position before you fund it. I don't care how you fund it. I don't care if you fund it with free cash, state authorization, or taxation. You have to create the position and approve the position first, and you know that as well as I do.
I appreciate being told what I know. But if it would make you feel better, we could lay this aside until we've done Article 11. In that case, I will move, I will keep Article 7 aside. Yeah, I'm exercising my prerogative. Article 8, I move to pass over Article 8. Seconded. All those in favor of passing over Article 8 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, Article 8 is passed over. Article 9, I move the Town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to accept and enter into a contract for the expenditure of any allocated or to be allocated funds by the Commonwealth and/or the county pursuant to Mass. General Law's Chapter 90 for the construction, reconstruction, and improvements of town roads. Do I have a second? Seconded. Explanation, this article is a requirement of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts for the Town of Hanson to accept state funding, including Chapter 90 funding for accepted roadways. This article authorizes use of the funds, which will be 100% reimbursed by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. of Massachusetts. The budget approved each fiscal year by the legislature and governor establishes the total funding available for Chapter 90, local transportation aid for that year. These funds are then appropriated to the 351 Massachusetts cities and towns. Any questions or comments on Article 9? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 9 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. There's a question about the Finance Committee's vote. Mr. Dugan. Oh, yeah, they voted to recommend this. No problem. Keep me honest, that's fine. All those in favor of Article 9 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article 9 is approved. Article 10, I move the town vote to set the spending limits for the revolving accounts in accordance with Hanson's general bylaw. Article 2-9, Section 3 is printed in the informational warrant. Seconded. Explanation: This article sets the spending limits for the revolving accounts, for the annual revolving accounts. Any questions or comments? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 10 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article 10 is adopted. Article 11, I move the town vote to amend the wage and personnel bylaws, Article 2-12, Classification and Compensation, by deleting Sections 11A through 11E in its entirety and inserting the new Sections 11A through 11E as printed in the informational warrant. Seconded. The changes to the compensation plan are in bold italicized text. The changes include the creation of a part-time informational technology assistant position and a part-time administrative assistant to the Select Board's office position, and the adjustment of salary ranges to reflect full-time status for the following positions: Veterans Agent, Library/Cenior Center Custodian, and Facilities Manager. Any questions or concerns on this? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 11 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article 11 is adopted. We'll return now to Article 7. I move the town vote to transfer $35,000 from IT expenses to IT salaries to hire a part-time IT assistant for 19 hours per week. Do I have a second? Seconded. Explanation: The funds will help secure a part-time information technology assistant for the Technology Department to assist with the daily IT operations of the town. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 7 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
Nay.
The ayes have it. Article 7 is adopted. Article 12, I move the town vote to raise and appropriate the sums of money to operate the Recreation Department during fiscal year 2024 under the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53F and 1/2, as printed in the informational warrant. Seconded. These budget requests amounts for fiscal year '24 is voted by the Camp Kewahney Commission for the operation and maintenance of Camp Kewahney. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 12 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article 12 is adopted. Article 13, I move the town vote to request that the Town of Hanson Planning Board consider adopting amendments to the Hanson Subdivision Control Rules and Regulations regarding the placement of stormwater retention areas and underground chambers where site conditions allow and require conformity with all state stormwater guidelines in place at the time. Seconded. This non-binding article requests that the Planning Board consider certain amendments of its rules and regulations. A retention area is a form of stormwater management and treatment. Retention areas function by retaining stormwater and then allowing said stormwater to infiltrate into the existing soil beneath them. The Planning Board will review all local and state regulations and best engineering practices during the next revision of the Hanson Subdivision Control Rules and Regulations to determine if underground chambers are the most feasible and economical option. Any questions or concerns? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Kim McCoy, 71 Cushman Street. I just have a question. I'm a little bit concerned with the wording of the "economical option." While I understand underground chambers are great for certain areas, especially in urban societies or urban areas, but in areas like Hanson where we have a relatively high water table, relatively high clay, and also we use our groundwater for drinking water, those underground chambers are often quite dangerous. So will those be considered? I don't think "economical" is the best choice of words there. I think maybe environmentally sound or groundwater-wise for us people who live in Hanson where most of our drinking water comes from groundwater, those underground chambers, like I said, can be very dangerous because of contamination. It's not visible if they're underground.
And I would just point out that the explanation wouldn't be voted on. It's just kind of the gist of the motion.
I mean, I understand for planning and for people building complexes, it's much cheaper to do those underground for maintenance as well because you don't have the exposed area for stormwater management, but it's not always the best choice, especially in communities like Hanson. So will there be public information about if they are going to vote that into existence? Or is this it?
Would the Planning Board, yes, Mr. Campbell.
Joe Campbell, I'm the chairman of the Planning Board. So to your point, through you, Mr. Moderator, to the speaker's point, very well-studied point about economical, I believe that the word "economical" is in there in regards to the term when it comes to developers coming. It's not so much economical impact to the town. The underground retentions, it already has been spoken about on a very light level. They are very expensive. It's one of the things that we have to consider. Any rules and regulations change have to have public forum, so absolutely becoming up tentative in the fall, depending on what happens with the upcoming planning. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or concerns? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 13 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article 13 is adopted. Article 14, I move the town to amend Article 3-3 of the general bylaws of the Town of Hanson by adding a new subsection 2C regarding the regulation of the demolition and disposal of in-ground pools as printed in the informational warrant. Do I have a second? Explanation: Neither the current general bylaw nor the State Building Code provides guidance on the demolition and proper disposal of in-ground pools. The amendment will provide the necessary regulations for contractors working within the Town of Hanson to follow. The amendment contains similar language used in other municipalities. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 14 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, one moment.
In anticipation, I saw your hand go up. In this, where it's amending an existing bylaw and something that has no, what we perceive to have no direct financial impact right now, that that's something that we would then defer to the town for a vote on that?
Once again, all those in favor of Article 14 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article 14 is adopted. Article 15, I move the town vote to adopt the Capital Improvement Program as presented by the Capital Improvement Committee as printed in the matrix handout. Do I, seconded. This is the annual article which approves the Capital Improvement Matrix for the next fiscal year. Any questions or concerns? And can I just say, that baby is so well-behaved. Congratulations. Any questions or concerns, Mr. Young? No, I'm not singling him out. He asked me to wait for a moment. Okay. Any other questions or concerns? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 15 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article 15 is adopted. Article 16, I move the town vote to transfer $25,000 from free cash to build the stand and reinstall the water wheel at the Nathaniel Thomas Mill located on Liberty Street. Seconded. When the original funding was received for the replacement of the wheel, the stand was thought to be in good condition. Once the wheel was removed, the stand had significant rot. The funds are necessary to rebuild the stand and attach the wheel to the rebuilt stand. Do I have a, we have a second, Mr. Dugan on the Finance Committee?
Yeah, our recommendation was to actually not recommend this by a vote of three to one, and rationale being that at the time that this vote was taken, our availability of free cash was significantly lower than it is now. And at that point, we didn't think this was a viable expense at this point in time, something that we would certainly entertain come October.
So, excellent. And I hope we're going to have a parade for the wheel like they did the last time. No, you don't have to address that, Mr. Young. I'm just kidding. Mr. McKinnon.
Just to kind of follow up on what the Finance Committee just said, I've had such great success tonight, I figure I'll go for one more. For those of you that don't know, I'm not going to give you a history lesson. We bought this place in 2010. In 2017, we allocated $9,000 for a water wheel evidently that couldn't fit on the stand. Since then, does anybody know where the water wheel is? It's behind the fire department. In 2019, we authorized $30,000 to kind of fix the place up, maybe some ADA stuff, but so now we've spent $39,000 as of 2019. Now we're adding $25,000. Is it 25, right? To me, you know, when you look at the stuff we've paid free cash, you know, for the traditional ballistic vests, we've got some stuff going to the fire department, trucks going to the highway department. To me, that's a need. This is a want. Do we really want to spend $35,000 on a water wheel for what? That doesn't work. And by the way, the chute, I don't know what you call it, that brings the water to the wheel, that's kind of broken. If we have $35,000 we want to spend, it's my opinion, give it to a department that can serve the many, not the few. Please reject it. Thank you.
Any other, Mr. Clemmons, if you could come to the microphone, please.
Phil Clemmons, 46 Main Street. I agree, this is a want, but this is an iconic want. If you look at the town's website and any number of other visual places where the Town of Hanson is presented visual, the mill is on it. A lot of things in the years during and since 1976, a lot of things at that mill have been done completely voluntarily, no public funded requests whatsoever. An Eagle Scout built the raceway, which is now in need of repair, absolutely it is. An Eagle Scout did that at no cost to the town. But a stand for the wheel is not something an Eagle Scout can do. There is an existing concrete beam in the stream waiting for the stand to be placed on it. It's in good shape. We found it. It's been surveyeded, it's there. The wheel exists behind the fire department, as was mentioned. This new wheel is made of aluminum. It looks great, and frankly, I think it's simulated wood, but it will last longer than the wooden wheel that was done back in 19 whatever it was. It is a want, maybe it could wait, but this isn't just for a small number of people, this is for the Town of Hanson. This is like the front page of our public image, so to speak. And yes, there are other things that are needed, they will always be needed. We'll always do as many things as possible with volunteers. Once in a while, you need to engineer something. This is one of those things, and I guess tonight we'll decide when we do it.
We haven't heard from Mr. Hickey yet. Mr. Hickey? Could you use the microphone, please?
Do I need one?
I don't want anybody to miss anything.
Testing. Oh, it works. I was the one that voted against, you know, deferring this to town meeting. Steve, you're absolutely right. We spent $15,000 in 2017. That was my first meeting that I attended, and I remember you standing up and speaking against it. If we did it right back in 2017, the stand and where the water runs through wouldn't be $25,000. It probably would have been 18, and the whole thing might have been $30,000 to get fixed. But we didn't do it. If we wait until October or wait even longer, with the prices, everything is going up. It could cost us $32,000 in October, next May, maybe $35,000. We made a mistake back in 2017, not going through the whole process and seeing what was wrong with the entire system. It would be like fixing a roof and, you know, leaving everything else not fixed and having to redo it again. What we should have done was in 2017, fix the whole thing. We didn't do it. We have an opportunity now to fix the whole thing and get it right, and then in the future we'll know to look under the shingles or to check out an entire problem instead of just patchwork. So right now, it would be 25. Later on, it could be 32, 35, we don't know.
Mr. Malisi.
Frank Malisi, Chairman of the Capital Improvement Committee. Then the Phantom Mill Commission came to the Capital Improvement Committee with a bunch of requests to fixing up the mill, not against any of them at all. We just denied those requests due to the fact that, you know, the mill doesn't generate enough money to even kind of sustain itself. It charges, I believe, $25 a day, $45 a day, excuse me, to rent out the entire place. At the camp, when we have a financial issue and we want to purchase a particular piece of, you know, a building or something like that to fix it up, we need to get that from retained earnings, we need to raise prices in order to make it sustainable, right? I think the wheel's important. I don't think we have the money for it this year. There was a reason why we denied it, and I think that if they raise their prices and try to get a little bit more of their own skin in the game when it comes to funding that wheel, it'll probably be more palatable at a different town meeting. But I urge everybody to vote no on this for this time, and hopefully they can rework their policies to come maybe next May and have a little bit of cash to throw on top of it.
Any other questions or concerns? Mr. Young.
There's a little park, I believe, just to the left of that mill. In that park, there's a bench that's dedicated to the memorial of Frank Sawyer Jr., who he and his crew, the brown copper, the brown master copper, I believe it is, in his crew, built that original wooden wheel. That was the, the mill was the major project for Hanson's bicentennial, the country's bicentennial year 1776. So please, in memory of Mr. Sawyer, whose bench sits there, right across from the wheel is Mr. Stearns, okay? And in memory of a lot of the people, including my good friend, Robbie Benzel, who, my late friend Robbie Benzel, who is the historian for the Hanson Historical Society, he and his crew worked the bayline originally. And many of all those folks who dedicated their time to not only create the wheel but to create the water wheel, please vote for this and put that wheel back on the mill. What's a historic mill, a waterworking water wheel?
Faith Garnhardt, 66 Bonnie Hill Lane. It's not a working mill. I've been inside. It doesn't do anything, so I question whether or not we want to spend money to keep a fake wheel running.
Mr. Malisi, anything you'd add?
Yeah, it's not even a historical structure. It's a reproduction. That's why they can't use CPC funds to do anything to it because it's not historical. So as much as I like the bench idea and everything like that, not saying it can't be done, just saying gather $10,000 and the town can fund the rest of it. Every department has a responsibility. I can speak from experience at the Camp Kewahney Commission. The town's not going to give you money just because you asked for it. You need to actually... need to actually come up with a good policy and procedure and make money to invest back into the property that you have, let's, all right.
We could, we could move to the vote, couldn't we? We are moving the questions, so all those in favor of Article 16 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed nay.
Nay.
I believe I am in doubt, so therefore, if you could, for the first time tonight, if you could please hold up your yellow card. So, all those in favor of, and please keep your card up until the tellers have had a chance to report the numbers. So, all those in favor of Article 16, please raise your yellow card now. All those in favor of Article 16 signify by holding up your yellow card now. 16, 14, 14. 17.
30.
30. All those opposed to Article 16, please hold up your yellow card now. 27.
54.
54. So, by a vote of 61, yea, to 123, nay, Article 16 is not adopted. Article 17. I move the town vote to appropriate or reserve from fiscal year 2024 Community Preservation Fund estimated annual revenues in the amounts recommended by the Community Preservation Committee for community, for committee administrative expenses, community preservation projects, and other expenses in fiscal year 2024, with each item to be considered a separate appropriation as printed in the informational warrant. Seconded. This article ensures that Hanson's community preservation accounts are compliant with the Community Preservation Act, which requires that a certain portion of the CPA funds be set aside for open space projects, community housing projects, historical projects, and recreation projects. In addition, it sets aside money for the administrative expenses of the Community Preservation Committee. Any questions or concerns with Article 17? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 17 signify by saying aye. All those opposed nay. The ayes have it, Article 17 is adopted. Article 18. I move the town vote to transfer from Community Preservation Open Space Reserve $3,653.22 for the purpose of placing a conservation restriction on the Sleeper property located at Zero Maquon Street. Do I have a second? Seconded. The Sleeper property was acquired for open space through a combination of Community Preservation Act funds and a state grant. The Community Preservation Act requires that any land acquired with Community Preservation Act funds, whether in part or entirely, must have a conservation restriction placed upon it. This conservation restriction requires monitoring that certain conditions are met on the property. Wildlands Trust has agreed to help the Town of Hanson to comply with the Community Reservation Act, Preservation Act, by accepting a conservation restriction on the parcel at Zero Maquon Street, also known as the Sleeper property, and performing required monitoring duties. To perform that service, they require a total fee of $11,070.38. $3,653.22 of this fee will be paid for using Community Preservation Act funds, and the remaining amount will be paid for using the Conservation Fund. Any questions or comments? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 18 signify by saying aye. All those opposed nay. The ayes have it, Article 18 is adopted. Article 19. I move the town vote to transfer $8,565 from the Community Preservation Historic Resources Reserve for the purposes of restoring scrolls of an 1857 linen map of the towns that constitute Plymouth County. Seconded. The Town of Hanson was gifted an 1857 linen map on scrolls of the towns that make up Plymouth County. The Town of Hanson Assessor, Lee Kamash, and the 200th Anniversary Committee, along with the Historical Commission, would like to have the map restored and framed to preserve for future reference and historical purposes. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 19 signify by saying aye. All those opposed nay. The ayes have it. Article 19 is adopted. Article 20. I move the town vote to appropriate $65,000 from the Undesignated Community Preservation Fund to purchase and erect a new playground area for Cranberry Cove, including installation, laying foundation, and purchasing equipment, and attendant expenses allowable under the CPC guidelines. Do I have a second? Seconded. The historic Cranberry Cove has been in need of renovation for quite some time. The Cove is the only public swimming hole in the Town of Hanson. This project will be, will be to erect a playground on the south side of the Cove, providing the citizens of Hanson more recreation opportunities. Any questions or concerns, Mr. Dyer?
Matt Dyer, 307 Woodbine Ave. I have a question, if we're going to build a playground at Cranberry Cove, could we take this money and build it at the new park on Plymouth, on High Street? You know, I mean, I don't want to be spending $65,000 at Cranberry Cove and be spending more money at the potential park and have multiple playgrounds that we're going to have to maintain.
Any, Mr. Malisi?
So, the CPC process is pretty rigorous, Mr. Dyer. I went through it with, with both, with both Article 20 and 21. The, the playground at the Cove that we're going to do is going to provide a lot of recreation for some of the younger kids who might not really know how to swim, but their older siblings will be there. Honestly, we should have a park within one square mile of every kid in this town, to be honest with you, so I, I would, I think the more parks, the better, and I will definitely collaborate with you guys in the High Street Park Committee after, you know, if this passes, that we get our playground, and we can maybe get a, maybe get a package deal, save the town a little bit of money, get two for one.
Any other questions or concerns, Mr. Clemmons?
The previous speaker is correct, he went to the Community Preservation Committee and presented a lot of ideas that made a lot of sense, but a question that actually did not come up at that point in time, and perhaps should have, is, would this park, would this playground be envisioned to be available 12 months out of the year, only the two and a half months when the gate is open and the Cove is in use? And if it was not in use the rest of the year, I'm not so sure about it. If it was going to be available and somehow the area kept safe and supervised and, you know, properly managed, you know, fine, but I just don't think that question came up before, I'm not sure what the answer to it would be.
Yeah, definitely, I can, so, sorry, Mr. Moderator, I should have waited a little bit. So, this park will only be available when the Cranberry Cove is open, there's a couple of different reasons for that. One reason is it's a fenced-in area right now, we have surveillance cameras in there. Second reason is we don't want to have kids there with unsupervised water access, and the third reason is, is, you know, Cranberry Cove has always been open for that amount of time. Technically, people aren't supposed to go in there anyway, so limiting it to two and a half months doesn't really make a significant difference, considering that the amount of people and the amount of traffic that we actually get down in the Cove in a summer span is, is, is a pretty great amount of traffic, so. The other thing is too, I would just want to point out that this was voted on by the Community Preservation Committee, I believe it was five members that night that were present, and it was 5-0, Mr. Clemmons being one of them. This didn't come up, but I definitely will entertain any questions about the security or what the use of the playground will be, and we look forward to implementing it and giving the towns a little bit more recreation.
Mr. Dyer?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, through you to Town Council. To Mr. Clemmons' point of having this playground behind a fence, does this create an attractive nuisance, and does this make the town liable with an attractive nuisance behind the fence?
So, I've never been to the Cove, and so I don't know, described to me more behind the fence and in front of the fence, is the, is the lake or pond within that area?
So, Ms. Federoff, when you pull into the parking lot, from left to right, you have the woods with a fence, you have the gate in the middle, further down, you have the end of the fence that's in the water, and right now, we already have patrons, or maybe not patrons, but trespassers going down into the water around the fence to get onto the Cove. So now, if we have a playground behind this fence, kids that are out on their bikes doing their thing, they go down into the water, they slip, whatever may happen, to get to the playground, is that an attractive nuisance, and would that be liable, would the town be liable for that?
And there's a possibility of them getting into the fenced-in area when it's locked up for the winter?
There, there, so.
Mr. Malisi?
Sorry, thank you, Ms. Moderator. So, yes, there is, this has been an issue in the past, they've always went around the fence. Last year, we actually installed multiple security cameras around there, so we have notifications when people do get in the area, so we can alert the police that they're actually breaking into that particular area. The fence is, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, seven, I'd say seven feet high, locked up on the areas, but you can't really get, you can't really, unless you put the fence out in the middle of the pond, which even if you could still get a boat around it, you can't completely seal it in. Another point is too, is that we also requested our insurance provide us with the insurance to actually put the playground on the Cove as well, so we're still in issue, we're still in, because the camp pays, I don't know if everybody knows this, but the camp pays for their own insurance policy on the entire camp, it doesn't come out of the town budget or anything like that, so we also are requesting that the insurance put a rider on there for the playground, that the town, or, I'm sorry, that the camp will actually pay for and use our retained earnings to, to fund.
So, so then, to answer your question, I mean, there's a risk of liability, of course, with any sort of opportunity for kids to hurt themselves, which exist all over the place, but when you build a playground, what the attractive nuisance means is it's something even more enticing than what is normally attractive to a child. But if you do have insurance which covers, and, and they haven't denied coverage or something like that, then you have protection, just like you would for the other playgrounds in the town, including one that abuts the water. If, if you have coverage, you have coverage.
And, and just to make it clear, the people that we had issues with last year going around the fence, other than adults fishing on the, on the docks and the piers, were that group of middle school kids that were causing a muck last year, right? And, and we haven't had issues where younger kids of, you know, 11, 10, you know, 10, 11 going around there and getting, it was just a particular group of kids that were going around, other than adults fishing on the PA, because it's honestly good fishing out there, so.
Middle schoolers, I've got them myself.
And Mr. Dyer, as far as the trespassing goes, it was a really hot day, so. Yes, sir.
TJ Roffe, County Road. The intention for the playground to be open to the public or only to people that pay for access to the Cove?
Mr. Malisi?
Since we're also using a part of our retained earning funds at the camp to fund this playground, so, but what you guys, what people don't know is this, this project will cost about $75,000 just for the playground, it will only be used for the people that are actually paying for the, paying for the pass at the Cove.
Yes, sir. Oh, you're all done. Any other questions or concerns? Are you coming to the microphone now? Yeah, very good. No, that's all right.
Keith Fisher, Amifah Road. My question would be, is there an option to put the playground in a different space that might not be like Pembroke's is somewhere on the road, but you can go to the playground whether or not you're actually swimming? I get that you don't really leave kids unattended, but for my friends, like, one mom will take four kids to the playground while the rest of us sit at the water, I don't mind paying to go to the playground and use Cranberry Cove, but it would make more sense to have it in a place where we can pay, even if it is a higher cost, to have the membership for a full year, be able to utilize the playground in the off-season, and then have more usage of the Cove in totality. Does that make sense?
Mr. Malisi?
Yeah, so, I mean, that's not a terrible idea, the problem with that is, is that you would, you would have to figure out exactly where we'd put it, and then we would have to erect fencing, I believe, around it, and security cameras there. So, the reason why the commission voted to put it behind the Cove right now is because we already have kind of those facilities in place with the fence there, and we have the security cameras there, plus we have like the bath house there and everything like that. It's not a bad idea, we could definitely talk about it at the next commission meeting that we have, and I will welcome anybody to send me an email or the commission an email with ideas of where they think the playground should go, so, yeah.
We have a motion to table this article, so, do we have a second? Seconded. All those in favor of tabling Article 20 signify by saying aye. All those opposed nay. The Article 20 is tabled. Oh, Mr. Pasquale.
Mr. Blas.
A go-to person for seconding. Thank you, Mr. Blas. Article 21. I move the town vote to transfer $35,000 from the Community Preservation Open Space Reserve for the purpose of restoring some of the landscaping at Camp Quaney's Cranberry Cove and renovations to the bath house. Do I have a second? Seconded. This project is a part of an ongoing effort to restore and rejuvenate Cranberry Cove, the only public waterfront recreation in that town of Hanson. This landscaping will bring back the natural settings of the Cove and work to make Cranberry Cove once again the spot to be within Hanson. This proposal will include the landscaping design and implementation of the beach along with other renovations of the bath house. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 21 signify by saying aye. All those opposed nay. The ayes have it, unless someone wants to challenge. The ayes have it, Article 21 is adopted. Article 22. I move the town to vote to transfer $1,500 from free cash for the Economic Development Committee outreach program for Hanson businesses and to conduct outreach to bring businesses to Hanson. Do I have a second? The Hanson Economic Development Committee will be conducting an outreach program by sending informational letters to existing Town of Hanson businesses, as well as attracting new businesses to Hanson. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none. All, all those in favor of Article 22 signify by saying aye. All those opposed nay. The ayes have it, Article 22 is adopted. Article 23. I move the town vote to reduce the interest rate to 2% from 5%, which is applicable to tax deferral and recovery agreements entered into pursuant to General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 41A, which provides for property tax deferral for certain qualified seniors with such reduced rate to apply to taxes assessed for any fiscal year beginning on or after July 1st, 2023. Seconded. Town meeting voters will now be able to establish an alternative lower interest rate to apply to property tax deferrals. Any changes in the rate would need to be voted on no later than July 1st of the fiscal year for which the tax relates. The assessors are recommending an interest rate of 2% for the property tax deferrals commencing with taxes deferred in fiscal 2024, the current rate is 5%. It's pretty incredible, interest rates actually going down. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 23 signify by saying aye. All those opposed nay. The ayes have it, Article 23 is adopted. Article 24. I move the town vote to increase the grocery receipts that seniors may have in the prior calendar year to be eligible to defer property taxes under General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 41A, from $20,000 to $40,000. Such increase to be effective for deferrals granted for taxes assessed for any fiscal year beginning on or after July 1st, 2023. Seconded. This is a local option to increase the grocery receipts as a property owner may have from all sources of income, from $20,000 to $40,000, in order to qualify for a property tax deferral, Clause 41A- in order to qualify for a property tax deferral, Clause 41A exemption. Any questions or comments? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 24 signify by saying aye?
Aye!
All those oppose, nay? The ayes have it. Article 24 is adopted. Article 25. I move the town vote to transfer twenty-two thousand dollars from free cash for the purchase of sixteen ballistic vests with carriers. Do I, seconded. Uh, these funds will be used to replace twenty ballistic vests. The current vests are five years old and have reached the end of their useful life. Any questions or comments? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 25 signify by saying aye?
Aye!
All those oppose, nay? The ayes have it. Article 25 is adopted. Article 26. I move the town vote to transfer from free cash seven thousand five hundred dollars to treat invasive (laugh) phragmites at, what is it? Phragmities at Smitty's Bog. Thank you very much, Mr. Santelucchia. You're much more familiar with bugs than I am, I guess. Uh, do I have a second? Thank you. Uh, phragmities have invaded the Smitty Bog Reserve. It's a good thing I have a sword. (laugh) Phragmities have invaded the Smitty Bog Reserve and threatened to spread throughout this important resource area. The town's agreement with the federal USDA NRCS requires that this reserve's ecosystem be maintained in good health for the continued enjoyment of future users. A wetland specialist will be engaged to treat the invasive weed in an, oh, it's a weed, in an effort to eradicate it at this site. Any questions or concerns? Mr. Clemens, I hope you're not pro-phragmities.
I never saw phragmities until I went to college in southwest Connecticut in nineteen sixty-nine. We didn't have it then. It's spreading all across, basically, North America. Uh, it's, it's humorous until you consider what it actually is. It's a weed that displaces everything else that's growing in a wet or even a moist area, grows like crazy, and, uh, is, it basically destroys the biodiversity of an area. If you enjoy walking through Smitty's Bog now, or, uh, Burridge, or any other place with tremendous amount of, of nice scenery and wildlife, you would detest phragmities, because those are the areas it moves in. However, it's not too late to treat it. There are ways to do it. It can be controlled, and we're proposing to do that. If we do not, uh, get ready for a, uh, seven to ten-foot-tall monoculture of weeds you can't see through and that wildlife doesn't like to live in.
Hi, Mr. Clemens, how do you treat it?
It's a combination of, of cutting and very selectively treated with a, a very, uh, uh, shall we say, um, well-tested herbicide with a very short, um, uh, shelf life. And this is the only way to do it. It can be, if you cut it, or, and just do nothing else but cut it, like mowing your grass. You're getting, you know, you're already alarmed by mowing it a few times. It just keeps coming back. Only this is, they're seven to ten feet tall. And, uh, it's, it's simply a bad thing environmentally, and, uh, the public who enjoys these places now, uh, would enjoy it a lot less if we didn't do something. Plus, plus the USDA expects us to do it, and, uh, they hold the deed to the property. We hold the deed, but it has, uh, it comes with certain strings, and this is one of those strings.
Very good. Any other questions or concerns? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 26 signify by saying aye?
Aye!
All those oppose, nay? The ayes have it. Article 26 is adopted. Article 27. I move the town vote to transfer from free cash twenty thousand dollars to replenish the conservation fund. Seconded. The conservation fund supports the commission's efforts to carry out its care and custody responsibilities for open space and recreation areas. These efforts include trail building and maintenance, provision of signage, notices and other information, property enhancements such as mowing, invasive vegetation removal, and site cleanup, wildlife habitat and stream improvements, removal of encroachments. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 27 signify by saying aye?
Aye!
All those oppose, nay? The ayes have it. Article 27 is adopted. Article 28. I move the vo, the town vote to transfer the sum of ten thousand eight hundred dollars from free cash for sealing and painting of the highway garage shop roof. Seconded. The rear shop garage roof has been leaking for many years. It was studied in the 2014 Hanson Facilities Review, and it was reported as follows. Metal repair garage, the existing metal roof is leaking and is in need of replacement. Remove and replace the roof in its entirety. Estimated cost of replacement, tw- two hundred thousand dollars. This article is a much less substantial investment in the obsolete building, providing necessary relief until the long-term solution to a new highway facility is realized. The current condition of the roof, however, needs to be addressed as soon as possible. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 28 signify by saying aye?
Aye!
All those oppose, nay? The ayes have it. Article 28 is adopted. Article 29. I move the town vote to transfer from ARPA, the American Rescue Plan Act, the sum of thirty thousand dollars to retain the services of a qualified firm to provide an assessment for environmental and hazardous materials at the Highway Department site located at 797 Indian Head Street, and the land surveying services to determine and establish the existing property lines at that site as more fully described in the informational warrant. Seconded. Uh, explanation. The town is in process of studying the conditions at the existing Highway Department location to assess the possibility of constructing a new Highway Department building. The site assessment would determine existing soil con- conditions within areas of the future building. Additionally, the current deed and title information is poorly written and vague. The services of a land surveyor are required to research and establish the existing property lines by instrument survey on the ground. Once completed, this will provide vital information in determining the best course of action for the site. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 29 signify by saying aye?
Aye!
All those oppose, nay? The ayes have it. Article 29 is adopted. Article 30. I move the town vote to transfer from ARPA, the American Rescue Plan Act, sums of money in the amounts and for the capital improvement and improvements and purchases as printed in the informational warrant. Seconded. The items listed below are proposed by the Capital Improvement Committee after having met and discussed, uh, with the town's department heads. So, as you can see, we have line one, fire, uh, department, protective clothing. Line two, Highway Department, uh, a sander. And three, Highway Department, a pickup truck. Any questions or concerns on any of those three items? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 30 signify by saying aye?
Aye!
All those oppose, nay? The ayes have it. Article 30 is adopted. Article 31. I move the town vote to approve the amended South Shore Regional Locational School District Regional Agreement as printed in the handout. Seconded. The regional agreement, last updated in 2018, is being updated primarily to include the town of Marshfield as a member of the regional school district, which would take effect July 1st, 2024. Other changes to the agreement are outlined in the agreement on file. Any questions or concerns? Ms. Kemen. Mr. Dyer.
Yes. Uh, we had a chance to, um, speak with the superintendent and go through the, um, the regional agreement. Our concerns were basically just financial impact in terms of assessment, in terms of, um, what we anticipate in future debt for their expansion project, and how Marshfield fits into all of those. And, uh, we did have a vote, uh, to recommend that this article unanimously based on that information.
And, uh, Superintendent Tom Hickey apologizes for not being here. He emailed me earlier. He has, I think, three other town meetings to be at tonight, so, he says hello. Any other questions or concerns? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 31 signify by saying aye?
Aye!
All those oppose, nay? The ayes have it. Article 31 is adopted. Article 32. I move the town vote to approve an amendment to Section 6, Use Regulations of the Hanson Zoning Bylaws, as recommended by the Hanson Planning Board on February 27th, 2023, as printed in the informational warrant. Do I have a second? Seconded. Sections of the Use Regulations have been updated to provide clarification and to address issues raised by citizens and departments within town, within town, to address the following. One, uplands requirements, uh, a clarification. Two, setback requirements from two streets, uh, updated based on concerns raised by various departments. I should note that this and all of the, the several zoning bylaw changes going forward require a two-thirds vote.
Hi, Stephanie Pascoe, Tavern Way. Um, I just have a question. This came up today, um, when myself and my friend Vicki here.
Tori Reynolds, Tavern Way.
Um, about the sec, if you, I just could, someone explain to me this article in depth, or as best you can, to what we're actually, um, voting in?
Would anybody like to discuss this?
So, what brought on this proposal?
Oh, Mr. Mr. Campbell.
Joe Campbell, Chairman of the Planning Board. So, our recent hire, Tony DeFrase, our town planner, one of the things that he immediately jumped into in regards to his reposition here in the town was to go back and look at previous articles that were not, uh, addressed as a result of the pandemic. And it was basically stoking the engines again, uh, for the planning and in regards to zoning. This particular zoning article is in regards to reclassification in regards to what upland requirements are, and then the setback requirements on two streets.
So, what subsection is that?
Excuse me?
What subsection is it, under those bylaws? It's six, but then what is it under that?
So, as you go along, you'll see all of the different highlights that are inside the descriptions. That's where the, the wording will change.
Okay.
If the zoning was to pass.
And so, there's not a specific property that you had in mind that brought this up?
No, it would be, that's townwide. This is zoning, so it would be townwide.
Any other questions or concerns? Uh, if you could go to the microphone, but this, uh, this, uh, voter was here first. Go right ahead.
Sharon Taviras, 20 Santos Court. On the informational warrant, it states that other boards and committees recommended this bylaw change. I'd like to ask specifically which boards and committees recommended it?
Mr. Campbell, can you answer that?
Sure, absolutely. Uh, so, a lot of the land use boards. We also had, uh, as for the uplands, it was to better, uh, put a better quantification in regards to what uplands are as far as the computation goes right now. Uh, it's a little vague, so we wanted to make sure that it was very clear that it was internal inside the planning department. So, most of the land use boards, as well as, uh, Building Inspector's Office, and there was multiple land use, uh, boards inside the town that had these discussions. And it came to fruition for the February, uh, public hearing.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Dave Mansfield, Stone Ridge Drive. Um, I just had a couple of questions on Section 4. I don't know if it's a typo or it needs an explanation, but it's worded, "The proposed structure shall meet the side yard setback for the second street." And, uh, I'm not sure what that wording means. Could you, could you answer that, Mr. Campbell, please?
Mr. Campbell.
Uh, Section 4 under AR dash eight, where it says, "The proposed structure shall meet the side yard setbacks."
Minimum setback requirements in feet, where it's highlighted.
There's a few different places where it's highlighted. Which?
Right. This is in Residence A, Residence Double A, number four, minimum setback requirements in feet.
Yeah, the setbacks go out through, through every zoning, so if it's just a particular typo.
Well, that's, that's just a question. If it's a typo, maybe it needs to be corrected.
Yeah, very well could be.
But you're right, it's repeated, it's repeated elsewhere as well.
Right, all, all zoning will have, uh, this sentence edited, as well as the contiguous, the word contiguous.
Okay, so what does side year setback mean?
Side yard setbacks are where you can...
It doesn't say yard, it says year. That's my question.
Again, it's probably a typo. If they pass it on to the plan, they're going to change this. It wouldn't be year, it'd be side yard setbacks.
That's what I thought, thank you.
Thank you for the clarification.
Uh, Mr. Hayes.
Ladies and gentlemen, as you know, the town of Hanson is no stranger to zoning bylaw problems. Okay, there's about fourteen pages here, if you count each page as the double page. I'd like to see this article be passed over until the zoning board of appeals has public hearings explaining every question in this book. Because what's happened in the past, when the law and requirements, things get squeezed in. Then we end up with projects that seem to be a problem in town. I think zoning is a very important thing in every single town, especially in the small town of Hanson, where we have as wetlands and lots of things going on. So, I think public hearings would be a great idea. I'd ask you to pass over this article until such hearings have been done and the public is more aware, because we have a couple hundred people here. I've been to zoning board meetings before, there's ten people. And it's only the people who usually have something to do with it. So, that's just my two cents worth. I'm trying to keep us out of trouble. I'm not trying to have things not done. I'm trying to have things done properly.
One more, in just a moment. Um, I'm, I'm trying to find out if the, uh, motion to pass over is privileged in any ways, but, Ms. Rain. Mr. Campbell?
Absolutely. There was public hearings that were published. There was public hearings that were attended. It does refer to the public hearing in February. And to comment with the last speaker, I appreciate the passion. But as far as changes to rules and regulations, it falls under the planning board's jurisdiction, not the zoning board of appeals.
Can I, yeah, go ahead. Okay. Um, we, uh, if, if we take your motion as a motion to withdraw the article, um, that would be a majority vote and without debate, although we've already had a bit of debate.
Okay, I'll withdraw the pass over and go to withdrawing the article. But to go on what Mr. Campbell said, in the last two to three years, there may have been public hearings, but half the town was scared to go because of what was going on with all the signs all over town about the zoning board of appeals. And I'm not saying they did anything wrong. What I'm saying is it was a debacle that nobody wanted to get involved with. And with sixteen or eighteen pages here regarding how sites are going to be and things are going to be built, I don't think, with all of these people here, if the blue paper articles that are going to come about this, I think the zoning board of appeals will have some hearings with a lot of people. I think it's prudent to hold off. There's no guy in hurry. I know we've rushed not zoning board of appeals, but I know some projects that have been rushed into in Hanson, and then those battles over it afterwards. It's, it's a small town. Let's try to make it right.
All right, Ms. Kemen. And then we'll have a vote on the motion to withdraw.
Um, I, I know, Mr. Campbell, that you did go through the process of having the public hearings, but I have to acknowledge that it is kind of a lot to make one's way through. And, um, and, uh, just a, a point of order, Mr. Hayes, it, this would never be a zoning board of appeals hearing. It would be a planning hearing, because these are zoning bylaw changes. So, it would still be under the purview of Mr. Campbell and the planning board. But I'm just wondering, you know, Mr. Campbell, would you entertain having additional hearings about this? And maybe even doing some education about what's being changed? Because I think that's the main thing, right, is, you know, the average Joe can't kind of figure out, pardon the pun, uh, but can't really figure out like what's being changed. And so, I mean, maybe you could do some cable, a little bit of, you know, interviews. I don't know. But, you know, when you've got a group of people saying that they feel concerned, um, that something's being washed through, it might be prudent to take a pause and think about whether, you know, you could do this in October.
Sure. I actually, it's whatever the will, the town meeting is going to vote on. As a point of order, as was pointed out, this is not a zoning board of appeals issue. It's a planning board issue. And just to point out the hard work that our planning board has done, we would thoroughly appreciate anybody coming to any of the, believe me, it's taken me years to try to understand some of this stuff myself, as well as dive into whether or not it's, uh, a fun reading, because it's now become fun reading for me. It is a lot. There is a lot going on in regards to our zoning. It is a lot, there is a lot going on in regards to our zoning. Some of it is intended for protections, some of it is intended to move some things along. So whatever the will of town meeting is going to be in regards to the articles, the planning board will have to adjust. As far as any questions or comments or concerns about these things, and especially out on social media or whatever, there's no malfeasance, there's plenty of education about the processes that we've gone through and the public hearings that we've gone through in regards to these different articles. Again, our new town planner has done a wonderful job at looking at some of our zoning to update, to bring us into this next century and to bring us into compliance with some of the things that are getting ready to come down to the town of Hanson in regards to zoning changes anyway. But certainly, the planning board will adjust to whatever the will of the town meeting is.
All right, I've already been overly permissive because the motion for withdrawal really doesn't allow for any debate, and it's a majority vote. So all those in favor of Mr. Hayes's motion to withdraw this article signify by saying aye?
Aye!
All those opposed, nay?
Nay!
The ayes have it by the, pardon? Mr. Hickey, the seconded. So, yeah, clearly there's a majority vote to withdraw Article 32. Article 33. I move the town vote to approve an amendment to the Hanson zoning bylaws to add a new section, Section 6.1, detached accessory apartment, as recommended by the Hanson Planning Board on February 27, 2023, as printed in the informational warrant. Seconded. This section authorizing the provision of detached accessory dwelling apartments is intended to, one, increase the number of small dwelling units available in the town, two, increase the range of choice of housing accommodations, three, encourage greater diversity of population with particular attention to young adults and senior citizens, and four, encourage a more economic and energy efficient use of the town's housing supply while maintaining the appearance and character of the town's one-family neighborhoods. Any questions or concerns on this one? And again, this is a two-thirds vote. Mr. Clemmons.
I think it's an excellent idea to try to increase the number of, call it affordable, call it sensible, housing units in town, but to put additional dwellings on existing parcels, it sounds, I'll be a little bit blunt, it sounds a little bit like a developer's dream, but it held forward and a conservation vision's nightmare. There's, I don't know, maybe I haven't studied enough, I'm not sure how many bedrooms per project this would increase the number by, and that affects the capacity of existing septic facilities and what, less acceptable or not. And once you have to increase septic facilities or do any building, sounds like you're gonna have to come before conservation with a notice of intent to make sure that there's a lot of, there's full compliance with all the usual things, distances from wetland, buffer zones, et cetera, et cetera. I'm just struggling a little bit to picture how this will really work and whether it will achieve its goal without creating more problems than we might anticipate. It seems like it flies in the face of development as we've known it up until this point in time.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes, through you, Mr. Moderator, the previous speaker, thank you for the comments. It's no, it should be no surprise to anybody that we learned in February during our public hearings and in the discovery phase from the town planner, that these accessory dwelling units are already happening in the town of Hanson. It's a way to put the regulation in, to make sure that these accessory dwelling units are meeting our existing rules and regulations, as well as our building codes in regard, same with our Board of Health codes, and encapsulate something that's already happening at this time. As well as being able to encapsulate some future, as described in the article, some future potential for small use dwellings, accessories of small use, to be able to maintain, you know, as a, for instance, somebody that wanted to have a family member in a small accessory dwelling on their property. So it's a way to encapsulate something that's already happening in the town, as far as the rules and regulations go, to make sure that they're properly vetted and they're properly meeting our existing zoning and rules and regulations.
Mr. Moderator.
If it's already happening in town, why are we letting it?
Mr. Campbell?
Yes, that's a great question for the department that is responsible for that.
Just putting it out there.
Yes, ma'am.
Hey there. I'm wondering how we distinguish between an accessory dwelling and something like a shed, you know, where I keep my lawnmower, you know, something of similar size could now be a tiny home.
Sure.
So how do we distinguish the two?
Mr. Campbell? Thank you, sorry, Mr. Moderator. So that's where you would see inside that, inside the rules and regulations, the 900 square feet, it would have to be applicable with Board of Health as far as the septic in the area. It would have to perfectly fit our rules and regulations that already exist in order to be able to obtain a permit. So as far as, you know, using a shed, that would not be, that would be outside of the scope of the regulation. A barn, a, you know, chicken coop, anything like that, it would be outside of the regulation. It wouldn't be considered an accessory dwelling building.
Okay, thanks for clarifying.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
So why do we need a bylaw change if it's already happening? Mr. Campbell?
So I'll say it again, it's to encapsulate and put on the rules and regulations to make sure that it is actually being built properly and the enforcement is where it needs to be.
Any other questions or concerns? Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Dermot Rooney, 659 Liberty Street. I'm one of the residents of Hanson that is contemplating adding an accessory apartment, I guess you would call it, to his property. My property's built in 1928, it's one of the oldest properties here. And like a lot of properties that were built at that time, my house is actually quite small, but I have a very large plot of land, so I have almost like one acre of land. So for us, work, my wife and I are considering having, my wife's parents moved back to Massachusetts from Florida, and really for us, like an in-law, like our apartment is not really feasible for us. And so something, this would be very feasible for us, because we have, A, we have like a large amount of land that we're really not using, and B, we have, I have like an old garage, which is probably almost as old as the house is, but it's practically falling down. And I just think in this current environment where the, where, you know, here in the Commonwealth, we're going through like a, you know, a state housing crisis where the median house price right now in the state of Massachusetts, $650,000, you know, I don't think that really works for a lot of elderly folk who want to move back in with their kids, such as in our case or the reverse, where perhaps some of the younger people are able to, you know, stay with their parents a little bit longer, but yet not being in the same dwelling as their family members. And so I would invite that, you know, at the town, say, yes, it is, so we can go forward. It doesn't mean that we're going to be approving all these dwellings. All of these dwellings are still gonna have to go through the same planning procedures and permitting procedures that anybody who wants to construct a home or build a home right now in the town of Hanson, whether it be like new septic system, setback requirements, plot sizes, and so on and so forth. I'm not saying that we should, you know, change the whole rules, we should make the rules same for everybody. So if you want to build like a single-family house, or you want to have like an in-law like apartment, or you want to have an accessory apartment, that it's all treated the same way. Thank you.
Seeing no other comments. All those, and again, this requires a two-third, oh, sorry about that. Mr. Damato?
I really think this should be passed over, looking from a Board of Health standpoint, meeting Title V, you're putting another building on a lot, there's a lot of regulations that have been met for this, and I don't think there's been enough thought put into this. I really don't like the way the article is written, and I think it should be passed over.
So I'll, again, I'll take that as a motion to withdraw. Again, that requires a majority vote. To approve Article 33 would require a two-thirds vote anyways, so no harm in taking two votes. Actually, let's just take the vote on that, unless you're arguing for or against the motion to withdraw.
I'm arguing for.
For the motion to withdraw?
No, for the article to pass.
Okay, well, now that that article, now that that motion has been made, let's take the vote and then we'll see if there's a need for any other comment. On the table right now is a motion to withdraw Article 33. All those in favor of withdrawing Article 33 signify by saying aye?
Aye!
All those opposed, nay?
Nay!
I believe the majority is against that motion to withdraw. So, yes?
Hi, Lee Gamache, I'm the assessor for the town of Hanson. And I think that this is a...
There was just a clarification, please continue.
I think this is a good article to pass. I can't tell you, being the assessor for the town, how many of our aging population are not able to stay in the town of Hanson because of our taxes. So I think this would be good for people who want to bring their families back here to Hanson, or if somebody that's aging wants to bring their children into the primary household and have an accessory unit available to them. I just, I, people actually come in crying to my office that they've lived here all their life and can't afford to stay in the town of Hanson. And I just think that that's sad. So I would vote for it.
That motion failed to withdraw, so, yes, sir?
I'm gonna be real quick, because it's getting late, but ADUs are super common, so I have been involved with these through our work. They're very prevalent in the Cape, very similar to arguments a lot of hopes just raised. So this is a great way for people to be able to put an additional dwelling on their property. It's very popular for seniors, and it's very conducive in order of solving some of the housing issues. I think Mr. Campbell did point out, the regulation is very clear, special permits have to be approved, it has to go through the Board of Health, so this seems like this is something that really would help a lot of the folks in Hanson, especially those seniors that are trying to get families back on their property. So I would encourage folks to support this.
Mr. Howard?
You're on Howard, 861 West Street in Hanson. I was in Lee's office probably six months ago, and we pulled out a book that she has and then, and on a lot in Hanson, there has to be 150 feet on a street, and has to be 30,000 square feet. And some of these lots that had the duplexes that are being put on, I don't really know how they're getting along with them. The trouble is, the thing is, Hanson is a bedroom community, and the, they have no industry. But on a lot, you have to have actually two leaching fields on a lot, because one of them you build, but you also have in the Board of Health records that you have to have another area equal to the area that that leaching field is built, in case that system fails. So that you actually have to have two leaching fields on a lot, but you're only using one. And I just want to know, because some of these duplexes and some of these two-family homes that are going up, I don't know how big the lots are, but the houses are awful close.
Mr. Damato, did you want to say something?
Well, Title V is pretty stringent, and on these small lots, you have a full-size septic system, you also have a full-size reserve area. So some of these lots that, you know, people are probably talking about, you know, putting these duplex dwellings on or whatever, they're just not gonna make it according to Title V. And I think Title V is becoming more stringent due to the new regulations that are coming up. I really think that this should be passed over, I don't think this is, this is not the time for this article.
Mr. Ellis?
I'm on the, I'm on the planning board, and all these things that we're trying to do is for the town and for the people that live in the town. And it's very difficult to keep them here, are their kids. Now, everything that needs to be done to the lot to conform to the Board of Health, the DEP, and the state, and any other other building constructions, and so on, it's not just coming in and plucking a shed somewhere from Home Depot, say, and then putting a facility in there for the people. No, this is gonna have to go through all the different boards in the town to get approval. If it can't hold a septic system, it won't hold a septic system. If it, it's a matter of pulling a holding tank in the facility so that they have to have it pumped out, but at least it gives them an option in the town. I really think that you should pass this and see the results.
Well, I think we've covered a lot of ground here, so why don't we move to a vote? All those, again, we need two-thirds to pass Article 33. All those in favor of Article 33 signify by saying aye?
Aye!
All those opposed, nay?
Nay!
Article 33 and the opinion of the chair passes by the required two-thirds vote. Article 34. I move the town vote to approve an amendment to the Hanson zoning bylaws to add a new section, Section 6O, battery storage farms as recommended by the Hanson Planning Board on February 27, 2023, as printed in the informational warrant. Seconded. This batteries energy storage system law is adopted to advance and protect the public health, safety, welfare, and quality of life for the town of Hanson by creating regulations for the installation and use of battery energy storage systems with the following objectives: one, to provide a regulatory scheme for the designation of properties suitable for the location, construction, and operation of battery energy storage systems; two, to ensure compatible land uses in the vicinity of the areas affected by battery energy storage systems; three, to mitigate the impacts of these systems on the environmental resources and other protected resources; four, to create synergy between battery energy storage system development and the August 2018 Commonwealth of Massachusetts Act to advance clean energy that established the Clean Peak Standard Energy Storage System. Mr. Basquid, if you could go to the microphone. Move to pass over. The, all right, again, this is, requires a two-thirds vote to be adopted. There's a motion to pass over, do we have a second? Seconded. All those in favor of passing over Article 34 signify by saying aye?
Aye!
All those opposed, nay?
Nay!
In the chair's opinion, the nays have it. Any questions or concerns about Article 34? Mr. Campbell?
Not really a question or concern, more of a comment and education for the public here at the town meeting. As I was saying earlier on, a lot of the things, because of the pandemic, had to kind of kick down the road as we were adjusting. One of the things is, as the moderator was mentioning, the 2018 Act, this is to encapsulate one of the issues that's coming our way as far as the industry goes, and it starts to get better photovoltaic panels, solar panels, now it's coming to the point where there are battery banks, so large battery banks possibly by not only a home resident, but also by the utility companies. If there was an area in town to have, like, this puts in the proper regulation in regards to that coming to town. Without it, who knows what could happen when the state mandates it? Thank you.
Any other questions or concerns? Seeing none, and again, we require two-thirds vote, so all those in favor of Article 34 signify by saying aye?
Aye!
All those opposed, nay?
Nay!
In the opinion of the chair, Article 34 is approved by the required two-thirds vote. Article 35. I move the town vote to approve an amendment of the Hanson zoning bylaws to add a new section, Section 6N, medium and small ground-mounted solar arrays as recommended by the Hanson Planning Board on February 27, 2023, as printed in the informational warrant. Seconded. The purpose of this bylaw amendment is to promote the creation of new large, medium, and small-scale ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installations by providing standards for the placement, design, construction, operation, monitoring, modification, and removal of such installations that address public safety, minimize impacts on scenic, natural, and historic resources, and to provide adequate financial assurance for the eventual decommissioning of such installations. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none, and again, this requires a two-thirds, oh, yes... Seeing none, and again, this requires a two-thirds, oh, yes, please, come to the microphone.
Deborah Swanson, McQuan Street. This Article 35 on the medium and small ground-mounted displays, you know, during COVID, there was an, there was a display that's going to put its zero pine grove abba something down and back, and lay a few. I don't know if that's still happening or not, but that was put into play by one of the members of that planning board. And it's in the middle of a residential area. Does this article protect residential areas from having these solar displays, whether small or large, from being right next to them with the big fences and everything else? I don't know what this, this is a lot for us to all digest tonight with all the planning board stuff and everything else, I think. There's a lot of stuff in this particular one that could be sent, there's more than that in my backyard, but I think we need to have some time to consider this. Because there was, we went to go to a public hearing, the planning board, when that solar display was being discussed, by a member of the planning board who was actually a person developing it, and we couldn't go because of COVID. And it wasn't on TV, like Governor Baker ran the interviews, we couldn't even participate through Zoom or anything. So I just don't know enough about this, I'm not comfortable with it, at least a lot to digest it this hour. Thank you.
Mr. Campbell?
Just as a point of correction, Mr. Moderator, for your last speaker, that's actually not correct. That ground unit was put in by a town employee of another, of a different board, it was not put in by somebody from the planning board. It's okay, thank you. So again, going back to the original of the 2018, as the technology advances, the same as what we need to have with our rules and regulations, they also need to advance as well. If everybody runs back to the late 2000s to mid 2010s, rooftop solar exploded. And then from rooftop solar, it then changed to large-scale solar voltaic places for municipalities. And now, through efficiency and redesign, we now have small to medium ground units. There are a few in town that, you know, that would have had to get special permit to have those in town, and we're trying to do that same thing, where we're bringing our regulation up to date with the technology that exists.
Any other questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those, again, a two-thirds vote on this article. All those in favor of Article 35, 35 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it by the two-thirds required, Article 35 is adopted. Article 36. I move the town to vote to approve, I move the town vote to approve amendments to the following sections of the Hanson zoning bylaws. Section 7, pork chop and hammerhead lots. Section 7, lot access driveways. Section 7C, accessory building. And Section 7D, off-street parking and loading areas, as recommended by the Hanson Planning Board on February 27, 2023, and is printed in the informational warrant. Seconded, the purpose of this bylaw amendment is to provide clarification and additional regulation to the following areas. Section 7, pork chop and hammerhead lots, I love those terms, to be renamed as estate or retreat lots, which would bring the bylaw in line with the surrounding communities; Two, Section 7 lot access driveways, to allow only one driveway per dwelling lot for proposed construction activities. Section 3, or, I'm sorry, 3, Section 7C, to clarify existing accessory building requirements regarding setbacks to property lines. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor, and again, a two-thirds vote, all those in favor of Article 36 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
Nay.
The ayes have it by the required two-thirds, Article 36 is adopted. Article 37. I move the town vote to appropriate an, sorry, it's getting late. I move the town vote to approve an amendment to Section 12, adequate access determination of the Hanson zoning bylaws as recommended by the Hanson Planning Board on February 27, 2023, and is printed in the informational warrant. Do we have a second? Explanation, the purpose of this bylaw amendment is to provide clarification and additional regulation to the adequate access and improvement to private ways bylaw. Mr. Camp?
Yes, just before we get into any other discussions in regards to this, I want to be very clear for, for everybody that's here at the town meeting, adequate access and improvements to private ways, for any lots on a private way that are new construction. For anybody that lives on a private way existing, this is for new construction.
Yes, ma'am.
I move to pass over this article because there is pending litigation, and is there a conflict with regard to that?
I'm told by town council that there is no conflict, you can have a bylaw despite the pending litigation. Ms. Federer?
And to be clear, zoning bylaws act prospectively, right, for a period, so if there was existing litigation, which I actually am not familiar with, but it wouldn't impact that.
We have a motion to pass over. Oh, ma'am, could we have your name for the record? No, that's all right, I think we got it. Was it seconded? Seconded, all those in favor of passing over Article 37 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
Nay.
The nays have it, Article 37 is still in play. Any other questions or concerns about it? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 37, which must pass by a two-thirds vote, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it by the required thirty, the required two-thirds vote. Okay. We're on to Article 38. Would someone like to make a motion? Ms. Crawford?
Cheryl Damon, 37 Stringer Lane. I move the town to vote to accept as a townway Alden Way, Gray Lane, and Stringer Lane as laid out by the Select Board pursuant to general law, Chapter 41 and Chapter 82, as described in detail below, and to authorize the Select Board to acquire by gift purchase or by eminent domain as easement to use said streets for all purposes for which public ways are used in the town of Hanson and all associated easements, and further to transfer from free cash the amount of $10,000, accept gifts for any expenses related thereto, and to authorize the Select Board to enter into all agreements and take all related actions necessary or appropriate to carry out this vote. Alden Way, Gray, Gray Lane, and Stringer Lane are shown on a plan entitled Alden Way in Hanson, Massachusetts, prepared for Tedeschi Gray LTD dated April 22, 1997, revised through July 19, 1997 by Sitech Inc., which plan is duly recorded with the Plymouth County Registry of Deed as Plan Number 803 of 1997 in Plan Book 40, pages 652 to 654.
Is there a second? Seconded, and I just want to clarify, if you could just respond to this. My understanding is that there were 20 people who, who agreed with this article?
20 people agreed, we have 27 or so from, from Alden Way, yes.
Right, but not in attendance, but when the article was presented, it was the sponsor plus 20 people, 20 citizens?
Yes, more than 20, yes.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay.
Typically, that number is put into the informational warrant, tonight it was omitted, but I'm told by town council that if we make that absolutely clear with this article and the next article, then notice is properly given.
Yes, there definitely is.
Thank you very much. Would you like to explain this article? Or would anybody like to explain this article? And please move the microphone, however it makes your voice sample.
Short would be the answer.
I wasn't going to say anything.
I know. Oh, I broke it.
No, you're fine. You can take it out of the stand and just use it.
Okay, I'll hold it, that's easy. Thank you. My name is Sandra Crawford, and I live at 30 Alden Way.
Just make sure you speak into it, though.
Oh, did you hear that? Okay.
It's fading in and out.
Oh, that's because I am. Okay. I'm a member of the Alden Way group, and would like to give you a brief backstory of our unique article and our reason for seeking public road acceptance for Alden Way subdivision. The info in this backstory can be found in the past 12 to 13 years of planning board minutes. And when I refer to the planning board in the next few paragraphs, it does not reference the current planning board. This planning board situation started back in 2011, so no, no regard to the planning board now. In 1998, building of homes began on the three streets, all of which were intended to be public. In 2011, the developers sued the planning board. I want people to understand that this is an older subdivision, but there were really serious reasons behind it, and that's why we're here. Developers sued the planning board of Hanson for non-payment. Engineers for the developer and the engineer for the town each provided reports stating satisfactory completion of the work per the Hanson's Planning Board rules and regulations. The town lost the lawsuit, the judge ordered the town to return the bond money to the developer, no one notified the residents that this even happened. Four months later, Hanson's town council informed the residents that the town lost the lawsuit due to a lack of responsibility of that planning board and to the detriment of the residents. So in 2015, instead of moving the subdivision along, the town methodically, in a four-year stretch, stopped all the maintenance on the road, sidewalks, catch basins, retention ponds, drain easements, and there were some safety issues that were not attended to. But they did keep the snow plowing, and then notified the residents that they were now living on private roads as basically another lack of responsibility. From 2015 to the current time, the neighbors have attended countless meetings, planning boards, select, and did everything they were asked to do for road, for road acceptance. And the town continues to string the residents along, plain and simple. In July 2022, residents presented the Select Board with a petition for road acceptance. Select Board was very nice to invite us to their select meeting on August 24. Three of the five Select Board members voiced their opinions, stating that they knew the story of our roads and that the roads should have been accepted years ago. Soon after, the Select Chair decided to clear a path for our road acceptance. Citizens' petition was filed, and that's why we're here. So honestly, all our feelings are, if the town had taken the proper measurements and fixed the mistakes that were made 13 years ago, and cared enough for the tax-paying residents of Alden Way, we would not be here tonight asking for road acceptance. Please help the Alden Way group with this unique article and vote for acceptance of our public roads. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? I'm informed this requires a two-thirds vote. Seeing no other comments or questions, all those in favor of Article 38 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The Article 38 passes by the required two-thirds. Article 39, do we have a motion? Oh, no, please, one more. Just one more.
Emma Demassey from 552 Indian Head Street. I move that the town of Hanson hereby adopts this resolution in support of the work of the special commission and the official seal and motto of the Commonwealth, established by a resolve of the General Court in 2021 and appointed by the governor to recommend changes to the current flag and seal of Massachusetts as printed in the warrant.
Do we have a second? Seconded, would you like to do the explanation, Ms. Demassey?
Yes, I would. I put this petition together and just rise and supported this article because it is time to take action. For four decades, people have been on a state level trying to have this flag and seal and the motto changed. In 1921, the legislature voted to create a commission at the state level to review the state motto and seal, which is prominently displayed on the state flag. Governor Baker appointed a 23-person commission, and it's a bipartisan group of state legislators, historians, representatives from tourism, designers, and Native American leaders from the major tribes in the state like the Wampanoag, the Massachusetts, and the Nittmuck. So I've had conversations with local tribe members and have come to learn how objectionable the current seal and flag is to Native American tribes throughout the state. The seal and the flag feature a Native American holding a downward pointing arrow, and above his head is an arm and a sword pointed down, and it's modeled on the sword of Maya Standish, who is well-known, but he is partly well-known for killing Native people and for displaying Metacomet's head, that was King Philip, on a spike not very far from here in Plymouth. So we're in the, you know, not very far from Plymouth where so much of indigenous history happened. And our motto reads, "By the sword, we seek peace, but peace only under liberty." And just to think what kind of message that sends to the 90,000 Native Americans that are living in Massachusetts and to the rest of us, that we need a sword to seek peace. Actually, I didn't learn about the seal and motto in third grade, and I just think for any person here, as a, as a parent, as a grandparent, as someone who knows young children, how do you explain why there's an arm holding a sword over a Native American head? It's a very violent image. So I'd just say after four decades of this trying to happen, it's time for a new seal and flag that unifies us and represents the best of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, something that all of us would be proud to learn about in third grade. So the commission, this is a commission that's existing, they're supposed to finish their work in November, and the recommendations will go to the state legislature, where our reps, I thought they might be here tonight, but Rep. Cutler, Rep. DeCoste, and Senator Brady will have the opportunity to vote and support. It's a state issue, but it's a local way of supporting it, asking the reps to consider this. And so with your votes tonight, you join 62 other towns and cities that have voted to support a new seal and flag. And just to clarify, this vote would only signal the support of the town for the commission's work that's already ongoing. It does not take any kind of stance on what the design would look like, and that is left up to the commission. So I just urge you to vote yes on this article tonight. Thank you.
Yes, sir?
Hi, Aaron Penetti, I live on Proudfoot, 19 Proudfoot Way. I look at this, I'm not necessarily in support or opposed to it, I guess if I had to choose a, choose a side, I'd be opposed to it based on, I think it's, it's an idea that's kind of captured not just locally, but it's nationwide, that we want to kind of go back and rewrite our, our own history and kind of villainize ourselves. So there was certain, you know, the little pamphlet here, and, and the actual warrant goes through, and it mentions what different symbols, you know, are supposed to represent and what they're not supposed to represent, or whatnot, and just, I mean, some quick things that... I like to consider myself kind of a historian amateur. I like to read a lot, and I go into this stuff. The motto, "By the sword, we seek peace", it's not directed at Native Americans at all. It was actually taken from a letter, and it was in regards to the Royal Governor, General Gage, who was the governor of the Boston area right at the beginning of the revolution. And it was basically stating that the colony no longer recognized royal authority. It had nothing to do with Native Americans whatsoever. We mentioned the downward arrow being a symbol of the pacified Native person. It's also a symbol of peace. Metacomet was mentioned. Head on a spike, or head on a pike, displayed in Plymouth for 20 years. Now, I'm not saying it's right or wrong. And it's considered, you know, it was considered a war trophy. Cultures from the beginning of time have been taking war trophies, one way or another. It's not that Europeans were the only ones to do it. Native Americans did it themselves. They took, everybody knows about getting scalped. That was a war trophy from the Native Americans. I don't think there's anything. Again, it's not right or wrong. It's just a matter of what has historically been done as a human species. The, there was another thing. I don't even, I don't even understand how this is supposed to be bad, but there was, the bow is historically accurate because it was taken from a representative bow of a Native American that was killed in combat. It's historically accurate. I don't see what the problem with that is. I mean, it's a bow. And let's see. The, oh, actually, the sword itself that was mentioned being held above his head. So when the states, the Commonwealth seal, because Massachusetts isn't a state, it's a Commonwealth. When that seal was originally made in 1780, it was actually kind of a couple different seals, or you know how this goes, right? Like people provide different seals, and they choose one. Well, what they did was, they took parts of some and parts of others and kind of made it. And that concept of a sword being held by a hand was actually taken from another seal that had a Minuteman. In one hand, he was holding a sword, and on the other hand, he was holding the Magna Carta. Again, it was more against the British and royal rule and had nothing to do with Native Americans. So again, I mean, I'm not sitting here saying like it's good or bad or right or wrong. I just, when I, it really frustrates me when there's one perspective put out there, and it's to try and villainize one side or the other. And when truth, you know, the truth of the matter is the colonists weren't good to the Native Americans. There's a lot of Native Americans that weren't good to colonists. There's a lot of Europeans that weren't good to, you know, all different colonies all around the world. And I guess that's all I have to say is that we have to look at history for what it is and not villainize ourselves now for stuff that happened 200, 300, 400 years ago. So, thank you.
Ms. Rain?
Several years ago, my husband and I, we frequently went down south, and we started going to various battlefields down south. One of the most stirring things I ever saw was Gettysburg. I spent a day with the guy driving our car. We didn't take a bus. And we drove around. He showed us perspectives from this, that, and the other thing. Another place I went to was the Hermitage down at, down there in Nashville. It was Andrew Jackson's place. And one of the things that the guy said down there to me that really struck me is that you cannot judge today by, you can't judge history through our eyes. You have to be there and be living in that time. We can't rewrite history and change everything just because our eyes now see it differently. It is what it is.
Mr. Don?
I live down here, 552 Indian Head Street. I want to say I really appreciate the latest comments. It's a complicated topic, obviously a point of big dispute in our culture today. But, you know, I wanted to say I believe deeply in honoring the past, and I also believe in changing for the better, even if it's uncomfortable. I was taught that our greatness as a nation and state is rooted in part in these simple ideas about doing the right thing at the right time. Our history as a Commonwealth and nation is woven with the history of the Native peoples since they welcomed the pilgrims 400 years ago. But it's been a mixed history, and I agree, you can't see it clearly from today's perspective. But I think that's being generous. I agree with some of the questions that have been raised, but I also believe we can do better today. The Native communities in Massachusetts are asking for this change for good reasons. And I think their ideas should be considered. You know, the good news is our history in Massachusetts has also been about national leadership on things like workers' rights, the women's right to vote, civil rights, at times when these ideas were not popular. And I agree, we must not cancel history. But we're responsible for making a better future. It's time to make a change. The current flag should not be discarded. It should be curated. It should be cared for. And it should be removed from the State House and put in a museum. For these reasons, I adjust to do the good thing and the right thing and add to our good history as a state and a town by voting yes to allow the state commission to complete its work with our support. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 39 signify by saying aye. All those oppose nay? Oh, it had to happen on the last one. All right. So if we can have the tellers take a vote, please. All those in favor of Article 39, please signify by holding up your yellow card. Mr. Hayes? 32? 15? Mr. Dyer, did you report? Oh, sure. 24? All those who are opposed to Article 39, please signify by holding up your yellow card now. Nine? Five? 32? 33? Oh, and 34. Is that your final answer? All right, so. So by a vote of 71 to 48, Article 39 is adopted. So thank you very much for hanging in there. Once again, please come out to vote on May 20, or if you can't make it that day, May 15, May 16, or May 17. We have a motion to adjourn. We have a second. I hereby adjourn the 2023 Annual Town Meeting. Seeing none. Dyer?